Nobody's raised their hands. Okay. Um, hey, do we have any liaison reports from, I don't see any town?
No liaison.
Liaisons here, okay. Um, any committee updates?
Do you mean by committee? Oh, well, the audit committee, but that's, we're going to get to that. Audit committee.
Okay, I, will we be expecting anything on committee?
Just, I have that on there, just in case Ray has anything to update from M L C A.
Oh, yeah, so, well, if that's what that means, okay. Um, so, the Massachusetts Light Commissioners Association hasn't done anything in the last month week. We will be doing a meet and greet at NEPA. And a chance to kind of meet other people, the commissioners and, and the leadership of the M L C A. Uh, it kind of a way of introducing what programming we have coming up for the end of the year. And just meet some other commissioners who are doing things similar to us and share, share notes and thoughts. Um, so that'll, that'll be evident when we get up to NEPA. Um, but other than that, uh, not much more is happening. The, um, schools for Reading are now, the Killam School is getting into design. The, uh, the Sustainability Committee has moved out of public comment mode into actually modeling energy and doing design, making design decisions and sort of narrowed the scope of involvement. I'm, I'm hoping R M L D is still plugged into that. Are you still plugged into the Killam School, Megan?
Yeah.
Okay.
All again.
All right. Yeah, they, they seem to be narrowing the, their input from, from us a little bit. It certainly, I was told, thank you, but no, thank you. Um, but I said, gotta keep R M L D plugged in. I mean, if you don't want me, fine, but there's a lot of things we could do there, so.
I met with Matt last week as well.
Okay, did you?
Yeah, I told him it's boredom, whatever he wants.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, they want, it looks like they're gonna, they'll be a ownership of the solar.
Yeah.
Probably need to spot.
Yeah, they're gonna do ownership of the solar, they put on the roof of the building. If we want to expand that into a solar park and, and do more with the other land area there, that will be something we'll would like to have a conversation. That would probably be R M L D's investment, but that's a conversation down the road there.
Wow.
Uh huh.
We're not talking about some editing time, but it's our call, so.
Yeah. All right, so, um, yeah, that's about it. Uh, I, as far as the senior center recal, um, I, I don't, they're on their own timeline. Um, and I'm not sure how they're progressing, except that they got approved by the town to do something, but I don't know what their, their design team is doing. And I think that's the three things I'm usually plugged into.
Okay, um, so let's move on to presentation of the 2024 financial audit, mind.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Uh, my name is Scott McIntyre. I am a managing director, which is just another word for a partner uh, at CBiz CPAs. Uh, with me is Ed Boyd, a senior manager, represent the leadership team on the audit of R M L D this year. Uh, just a real, real quick note, um, at 5:30 tonight, we met with the, the audit subcommittee in the Town of Reading Audit Committee. Uh, walked through the audit and the financial statements for about forty-five minutes. I had some great questions, uh, question, question and answers. You know, every time Ed and I come to Reading, we can always count on there's being some good detailed questions. We actually like that when people ask good questions about them. Um, this evening, we're gonna go in a little bit, you know, brie- briefer manner. The committee still wants to ask us detailed questions. Be happy to answer them, but by design, this is designed to be a little bit of an overview of what was gone through in detail at, at 5:30. Uh, before, you know, say anything else, though, um, it's kind of my, my third year here as the, the partner and three years ago, I was here with what I'll call my legacy firm of Melanson. I was here a year ago, I think it was in May of twenty-four. Uh, I indicated that Melanson had merged with Markham LLP because no one goes into public accounting anymore and we needed resources and technology. Well, little did I know eighteen months later that CBiz, uh, a publicly traded corporation would buy Markham. Uh, so, inside the last inside the last two and a half years, uh, I've now had three business cards over the course of my thirty-eight years of public accounting. I had one for thirty-five years, so, uh, but with that said, I can certainly answer any questions on the name changes. Uh, but by and large, uh, you know, I've been involved in this audit for, for many years. I did bring Ed into it this year. He's done work in the town of Reading before, uh, but I brought him into R M L D's audit. Um, as I said to the committee earlier, uh, we were originally scheduled to be here back in May, then again in June. We needed to defer it or delay it a little bit. Um, in, as, you know, our professional auditing standards uh, require that when there is turnover in key positions during the audit process, we need to do some inquiry. We need to do some test work, uh, and that's why we were not able to be here, uh, in, in, in May and we just weren't done dotting our i's and crossing our t's in, in, in June as well, but happy to be here tonight. You know, the results of the auditor are, are, are very good. Ed's gonna walk through the balance sheet, the income statement and the cash flow statement. Uh, but in, in essence, after all the test work that we did and the, and the standards that we followed and we were required to follow both generally accepted auditing standards here in the United States, as well as generally accepted government auditing standards. After following all of those standards, happy to be able to report to the committee that we did not need to propose any audit adjustments for your statements to be, uh, in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles, so. That leads to, uh, for those that might want to follow along, it's, it's print page one. Uh, I'm not sure what page it is in the packet. I'm sure, uh, Aaron or Erica can bail me out there. Uh, our audit opinion is what is known as an unmodified. There are no modifications to our opinion. In other words, it means that in our opinion, your financial statements are materially fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle. Again, it goes on for several pages, talks about the, uh, base, the, the standards that we followed. Uh, with that, we're gonna skip all the way over to your statement of net position, which, uh, is, Ed's gonna tell me in a minute what print page it is.
Print page eight.
Print page eight, and I'm going to let Ed take it away and walk through a couple of key accounts on this page. One or two on your statement of revenues and expenditures, and maybe just a quick word on the statement of cash flows. Then we'll open it up to any questions that the committee may have.
Back to page sixteen.
Thank you, Scott. Um, as Scott mentioned, I'm gonna go over a couple of the elements of the financial statements. First statement that we're gonna look at is called your statement of net position, or what is commonly, it looks like a balance sheet. So that's gonna be on page eight and nine, uh, that is broken up and really just for ease of, of presentation, as over the years, this is kind of expanded with accounting principles and just, uh, just for, for clarity purposes, that's, that's the way it's presented. But really, in short, I think on the asset side, you, you, you would be looked at as in a favorable and, and strong position. And then over on the liability side, we'll get to that in a minute, uh, particularly your long-term liabilities, I think really the, the theme would be managing them appropriately and proactively. So looking at really your assets, um, you know, largely you had a positive overall change in cash, in, in cash position. Now, that's gonna be a little bit more apparent when we look at your statement of cash flows, but something I just wanted to point out, and we talked about it with the, the audit committee earlier is, you know, the first number you look at on page eight, you see that, that cash went down, and I think that just would gonna raise the question, well, you know, what happened? But I think when you look at the overall components of where the money came from and where did it go, your overall position went well. When factoring in your investment in capital assets, prepaying of certain things and some year-end timing issues, that's gonna be looked at as your decrease, not necessarily a deterioration, if you will, which I think is important to, to understand, is that overall your cash position went up, but um, just looking at year-end and factoring in some of those differences, um, you know, that was really, really the driver there. So, over onto page nine, I, I had mentioned your long-term liabilities. And you've probably heard to, um, almost nauseam at this point, uh, particularly at these types of, of, of meetings, your discussion over your net pension liability and your net OPEB liability. And OPEB means your other post-employment benefits, particularly retiree healthcare. Now, if we, we were to go back five, six, seven years, you, you would see that these numbers were probably significantly larger than they were now. Um, so what they represent is in that pension liabilities case, it's your applicable portion of the, the Reading contributory retirement system, overall net pension liability. So you're about a twenty-seven percent member, and that's recognizing your, your, your applicable portion there.
Can you speak up, please, a little bit? Can't hear you.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Is this a little better?
Much better.
Okay. Um, so as you can see on the net pension liability and the comparative statements here, going from all the way to the far right, which is twenty-twenty-three, to, to the left is twenty-twenty-four, your net pension liability, uh, went down a little over two million dollars. This is largely driven by favorable investments, uh, or investment activity, um, during, during calendar year twenty-twenty-four. Um, but also even in, in, in years prior to that, uh, it's something that, uh, is, is determined on an actuarial valuation every other year. It's in fact, it factors in aspects like investment return, um, the overall census, different, different metrics such as, um, you know, retiree, age, mortality, things like that, an actuarial determined liability. And, and again, I think in looking at net pension and OPEB, the key phrase that, that I like to use is just being proactive in addressing these liabilities. As it relates to net pension liability, the amortization period for that liability to essentially go down to zero is, is eight years from today. So, so again, in eight years from now, kind of everything else being equal, the hope is that's gonna be zero. Now, similarly, on the net OPEB liability side, now that's, that's related to primarily retiree healthcare. That went up a little bit over the prior year, four-point-six million dollars compared to five-point-seven. But similar to pension, R M L D has set up an OPEB trust many years ago, uh, one of the, probably the early adopters of, of really actually setting aside funds and, and trying to address these future costs. Um, you're seeing the fruits of that now where you've been, you've been consistently contributing to that. And those assets that are, that are dedicated for your OPEB purposes are used to essentially offset the overall liability. And similar to pension, um, in, 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 in OPEB's case, it's about fifteen years as far as amortization goes, that liability is gonna be down to zero. So I, why I want to bring that up is because it's, I think it's really important when you're looking at these liabilities, this is not just an R M L D related item. Anyone that's issuing financial statements, uh, or any local government that's issuing financial statements in accordance with generally accepted, uh, accounting principles is dealing with these long-term liabilities. So I think, I'll certainly on a local level, and there's been certainly more discussion um, at the Commonwealth level and nationally, there's been a lot more attention, uh, and R M L D has been very, very proactive. Uh, and I, and I think in, in looking at these long-term liabilities, making sure that you're addressing them and to not, um, you know, really have this become something that's gonna impact bottom line and, and, and overall your, your, your budget.
I have a question on that. Um, so what are the assumptions that go into your statement around the eight years or the fifteen years? Is, is there a certain amount of growth or, you know, the employee base, is there a certain, you know, interest rate or return on our investments? What, what are those assumptions?
Great, great question. Um, and those are, those are actually disclosed in the footnotes. We can certainly look at a few of them, but, but just, but to, but to that point, um, no, the great, great question, um, but it, but it is there. If you do want to look at it where it will, it will tie, it will give you the mortality tables that are being utilized. It will give you the discount rate, uh, your payroll growth, um, things like that, that really are the key inputs.
And those are things that the management of the organization from a growth or, or returns perspective provided.
Yep, in conjunction with the actuary, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, probably more discretion on the OPEB side, whereas the, it's the contributory retirement system that, so other, other folks outside of, of R M L D will have some input on. But it, it, regardless, it's folks associated with the town evaluating those, those key metrics and not only how, um, you know, how how realistic they are, but how, how aligned they are with, with also other local governments that are, that are reporting, particularly in Massachusetts.
Without the disclosures for pension and OPEB, I think this report would be about two-thirds as thick as it is. The, the disclosures are um, robust. I, I think they, you're hearing personal opinion, I think they could be scaled back. There's so much information in there.
And is that a town?
No, it, that's a, that's a gap, generally accepted accounting principles require it. And, um, it's just, it's a bit overwhelming. You know, Ed and I deal with it every day and, oh, there's just so much information in there. I, I don't know that it, I, I always question how meaningful it is, but it's required, so that's why it's in there.
Any other questions on the balance sheet? We'll just go to the next page, which is the statement of revenues, expenses and changes in that position. Um, this is really your comparative income statement. Um, and we're gonna go about halfway down and you're gonna see your operating income. For twenty-twenty-four, it was about thirteen-point-eight million dollars compared to about fifteen-point-two over the, over the prior year. Looking just above that, uh, you can see your operating revenues grew by about five million dollars. Um, and then on the, on the operating expense side, there was also a similar increase on, on, on the, on the expense side and uh, both, both years leading to positive operating, um, income to the June of thirteen-point-eight and fifteen-point-two million dollars. Moving down into your non-operating revenue, really getting into more of the, kind of the smaller aspects of the finances as it relates to investment income. Um, so, so, some other revenues, um, and then your return of investment back to the town of two-point-five million dollars, which is, which is pretty consistent. Ultimately leading to a very favorable and positive change of thirteen-point-one million dollars. Now, I had mentioned earlier that with, with GAAP and, and looking at the balance in the income statement, it, sometimes it might be hard to really kind of see how we did. And I think the cash flow statement is always the, the best place to go to, uh, in, in evaluating, you know, how, you know, how the year went, when you're seeing what, what inflows came in and what outflows came out. So that's on page eleven. And really, what we want to see in looking at the cash flow statements when, when we're taking a look at it is the net cash provided, provided by operating activities, which is gonna be that first, first section. And we typically like to look at whether or not that the cash provided by the operating activities at a minimum is, is covering your, your, your debt service. And making, essentially generating enough cash to pay that off, but in R M L D's case, that's, that's, that's not an issue here, so. Uh, so not only are you generating that, 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 that cash from operating activities, you, you really don't have the need to see that going out for borrowed, um, funds, both principal and interest. And just moving, moving further down, you can see that while I talked about cash going down earlier, you know, I think what, what this really provides a nice snapshot of is, well, thirteen-point-five is significant investment in your capital assets. You know, so you have, you have money that's coming back into, into assets that you can utilize and deploy, uh, to, you know, to, to your customer base, if you will. Then, third number up from the bottom, also very important is overall, what is our change in, in, in net cash? And you can see that, um, for twenty-twenty-four, it was just under a million dollars, at about nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So, it's a little bit different than looking at the balance sheet and the income statement, but I think this is a really nice snapshot into kind of letting the reader know and the user know where, you know, where, where your cash went. I'll pause there. Any, any questions in particular on this statement?
There is a race, Sam.
Okay. Go ahead. Hold on a minute.
Hi, this is Karen Herrick, Reading Select Board. Thank you. Um, just a quick question. Um, we were looking at finances over at the town, our last select board meeting, and, and we did notice that the contribution to the town of Reading um, has, um, decreased a bit, and the formula was designed to have that, um, fixed portion and then a variable portion that was, that should increase when kilowatt sales increase. And it was just a minor decrease, but it is the first decrease we've ever seen. And I was just wondering if we could get some clarification on, um, why there was a dis, why there was a decrease.
We had a fairly robust conversation about it at the five-thirty meeting and, and I may defer to members of R M L D. Uh, I know it's based on kilowatt sales, as was mentioned in the question, but those who may have a deeper pulse than Ed and I on, on kilowatt sales, um, to, to, to address that.
Yeah, uh, Karen, um, Ray Porter, uh, Chair of the Board of Commissioners Audit Subcommittee, uh, was part of the discussion in the previous hour. Um, the, the formula was, uh, there was a lot of discussion in years past about the formula, and the formula has been adjusted so that the contribution is based on the amount of energy sales that R M L D has, that we thought that that was a better long-term, uh, metric for providing contribution to, uh, the contributing cities and that we service. Uh, for lots of reasons, uh, from year to year, kilowatt sales will go up and down. That's why that number actually is a three-year average. So we roll that average every three years and, and base the contribution on that rolling average. Um, so the difference is, is very small. Um, I mean, I guess fifty thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money, um, relative to nearly two million, but, um, it's very similar. Uh, the numbers were fairly flat and therefore the, the contributions, uh, were flat also. Um, R M L D's contribution to the contributing cities is among the highest in our, in, uh, light departments. So, um, we're still, I think, re- returning good value to the communities.
Thank you. Um, so I was just under the general impression, having attended a number of your meetings, that kilowatt sales have been steadily increasing year over year. So that's where I'm confused. Um, and, and I can, I can dig into this a little bit offline, um, because unless you guys tell me, oh, we, we had a down year, so that's why that formula should always be heading, trending up, at least the way the economics have been working.
Long, long-term, that number should grow faster than the rate of inflation, which is, again, why we use that metric. But kilowatt sales is based on a lot of things, weather, uh, town growth, conversion of cars and heat pumps. And that number is averaged over a three-year period. So it is, um, yeah, there's a lot that goes into it to tell you exactly why that number came out the way it did, would require dig into it a little bit. But, um, long-term, uh, we would be expecting increases in net kilowatt sales and therefore the contributions should be, um, generally increasing faster than the rate of inflation. It just didn't come out that way this year.
Because of the rolling average?
In part the rolling average, but weather will play a big deal in kilowatt sales. I mean, if you have, uh, a warm winter, then you're not gonna turn up the heat. If you have a cool summer, you're not gonna turn on the A C. So it, it, it has, it, it could vary.
Okay, so I just need to, um, go back to the kilowatt sales for the last three or four years, and those will cover the three-year average because, you know, I was just kind of surprised. Um, it's, everybody's been using more electricity and I have not heard of y'all having a down year for kilowatt sales, even with the weather changes, but, you know, I can, I can miss things. So, so I guess that's what, um, I'd like to do, because that formula is not that complicated and the driving factor is kilowatt sales. And historically, it's been going up, so that's where the surprise is.
And that's the expected trend, Karen.
Yeah. Okay, I will, um, I will go on your website and, and track down kilowatt sales. Thank you.
And you have a cold year in the middle.
Right.
It's gonna go down.
And, and it's a negligible number. I, I mean, I, I wish, it's three thousand dollars, and clearly, um, that proportionally, it's, it's a tiny number.
Well, it's not, yeah, it's not a, it, it's not a big difference, except that you're expecting.
Trend, she's concerned about the trend.
Yeah, that you're expecting five or six percent growth and it's the same. So, you, you know, just the numbers sometimes work that way.
Um, could, could I go back to the pension liability just for a second? And just so, uh, so I'm the newest person on the board, so apologies if these are, uh, you know, questions, just a basic understanding here, but, um, you mentioned that the, uh, that you expect the trend towards zero, uh, for eight years and then fifteen years for the O P B. I'm assuming that means that, um, R M L D is paying into, uh, a pension account that eventually will balance out so that this liability can be zero and instead that account, that particular pension account is covering all those expenditures moving forward and that the actuariales say that those expenses are covered by that particular account. Is there an offsetting deposit into that account somewhere that, or, or is that buried into one of these lines? That is increasing that account regularly?
Great question, an interesting one. Um, Ready, R M L D is the Department of the Town of Reading. You have, you, what we're looking at here, I'm pointing to the screen and you have in your iPads, are what we call standalone departmental financial statements. Um, in a similar way, it's slightly different, but the Reading Contributory Retirement System issues standalone financial statements. Um, so the, the outflow of dollars, when, when you Reading Municipal Light Plant make your contribution, that's an actuarially determined contribution. Uh, that's an expense on, on your books and a, in a revenue on the retirement system books. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I think so. In other words, there's a, the, the, they're paying into the, I, I guess I'm wondering where the, where the payment into the pension plan is happening so that the, uh, you know, so that the pension accounts are taking over that, that I, I understand it's not a liability technically from their perspective, but this particular liability.
It's, it would be.
Kind of payable.
I think it, I think it would be in your operating expenses.
And, and it would be a part of salary and benefits, I assume, right? So, yeah.
Yes.
And, yeah, and so do those, so, so those, those payments are made by the individuals, in a sense, as part of their salary package, that's coming out and that is in the uh, sorry, in the operating expenses on the income statement.
That is correct, okay. And then to what Scott was referring ear- earlier, if you, so the, the, um, the retirement system issues standalone financial statements, but if you were to look at the town's financial statements, both R M L D and the retirement system are presented there. And you would, if you were to look at the retirement system, you would see member contributions, which would be R M L D. Um, and then also employee contributions that are broken out separately. So that's where those inflows are going. It's just not a part of this particular document.
So why the liability for R M L D? How does that come into being?
Because the retirement system, you know, has, has very few employees, right? It, the, the liability is amounts of money that are ultimately owed to the employees of the town and the various departments of, of, of the town. So the retirement system doesn't have the pension liability, it has the assets.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this, the plan has, is required to, under generally accepted accounting principles, to calculate what its total pension liability is based on the demographics of the workforce and retiree base here at R M L D, as well as the town. I'll say the school department as well. Teachers are part of a different plan, but there are members at the school department that are part of the Town of, of Reading Contributory Retirement System. So, uh, the, the concept under GAAP or generally accepted accounting principle is the retirement system doesn't have the liability, it's the contributing members that have the liability and, and, and need to carry that liability.
All the enterprise accounts.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
As well as, I don't wanna say the general fund, but the, 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 the town operations other than its enterprise funds also carries a, a long-term liability.
So, so this could also fluctuate significantly just based on market outlook. Uh, depending on what's happening with the pension itself, right? This could go up and down.
Absolutely.
Apart from contributions or, or whatever.
In your, this, the column on the right of this page that's, uh, up on the screen, the net pension liability, as Ed pointed out earlier, fourteen-point-two million dollars in the twelve thirty-one twenty-four, year before was sixteen-point-five.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to overcomplicate this, but the, the liability is measured twelve months prior to your balance sheet date. It, it's permissible, and in order to get everything done, the actuary's got to get its work done and the auditor's got to get its work done. It's permissible. So your liability at twelve thirty-one twenty-three was based on market returns from calendar twenty-two. So your liability at twelve thirty-one twenty-three was based on market returns from calendar twenty-two, which I know at this point it's several years ago, but market returns in twenty-two were not good. That's why the liability was up last last year. And twenty-three returns were much better. So that's brought the liability down.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's helpful for a big liability number.
Yeah. I probably should have added, everything else remaining equal, meaning to what you're saying is that the actuarial assumption is close to reality. But yes, factoring in some differences, it could could shorten or it could elongate that that period.
Yeah, that's great. Okay.
Any other questions? I don't know if we had actually jumped over. The only other thing I wanted to point out was just on pages thirteen and fourteen. This is just where your OPEB assets and the activity reside, just to show you that really that this is segregated from from the, from operating in that it again is separately called out, but restricted for OPEB purposes. That was very, very high level, just really looking at some some key accounts. Happy to take any other questions.
Yeah, so I just have, I have a comment for Karen. So Karen, if you look at the previous page where it shows the voluntary payments to towns, this year it was up by sixty-five thousand, okay? And Reading gets about half of that. So that more than, at least corrects for, you know, any reduction on the other side.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm not sure I have access to this document. I don't, it wasn't emailed with this. I don't know that it's posted.
All I'm saying is if I just look at the numbers, or at least, I think if you look at the net contribution from RMLD to Reading, the Town of Reading, based on these numbers, it should be higher than last year. Okay?
Yeah, we'll check it out. I'm looking at your annual statements, two thousand twenty-two, kilowatt sales were down. So that could be affecting the average, but I'm going to keep looking. Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right. So so now I have a question for Scott and then for Ed. So Scott, thanks for clarifying the combination business.
And name changes?
Yes. The reason, yeah, the reason I'm asking this question is that last year, when Markham took over Allenson, the audit got delayed. Our audit got delayed. And it it happened with other organizations also. So I know Markham was late on audits for a lot of companies, especially smaller companies. I don't know how it was for large companies. My personal experience has been with Markham last year was slow on audits. Okay?
Slow on what? Just?
On audits.
Okay.
On completing audits. And this year, again, we got delayed. And you explained that this delay this year was because of the change in the general management. But it was already delayed a little bit coming to us this year because it was scheduled, delayed, delayed. Okay? I'm asking this question to plan for next year. So going forward, I just want to know what you think we can expect. I know you can't promise anything. But what should we be doing just from a planning perspective, you know? So if we know that you guys are going to take time, we'll just plan for a longer time. So it's just good for us to know.
Sure. I I think I can offer a response to that. I think we were on track to to be here in 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 May. We we started the audit at the very end of March, I believe. And it went through several weeks in the in the month of April. And I think we were originally on track to be here in May. Then, as I explained earlier, the delay, we had additional procedures to do, additional consultations to do. We have been a little bit delayed. We see biz. You know, you go through two mergers in two years and a lot of policies and procedures change. And I don't mind saying this, we lost four key people. What I would, what I really enjoy saying as a follow-up to that is three of those four people have returned to us. So I think we're in a situation, a situation where, you know, some delays that perhaps were caused by by Cbiz, my firm, I think we're in a darn good position to cure those.
Okay. All right. So so thank you. And then Scott, my next question is about, you know, and and I think you had mentioned to me earlier, but it seems your team has experience with other utilities. Is that correct? With other municipal utility, municipal electric utility?
Yes.
You have audit experience with that. So based on the work that you guys have done historically, what are the most critical metrics that your team considered in the report? And that we should be sensitive to looking, you know, what we should be sensitive to going forward? What are some of the metrics we should look out for going forward? From your perspective?
Sure.
Not not from an operational perspective, but from an audit perspective, what do you think are the most important metrics?
I think on on the cash flow statement, looking at, it's the one up on the screen here, that first subtotal, it's the net cash provided by operations. So inflows of cash from from sales and collections of those of those sales minus operating expenditures. Let me clarify, obviously, I think everybody on the committee would realize that depreciation is a non-cash operating expenditure. So excluding that, does, is that number, as Ed pointed out, a lot of times people look at that and does it cover the principal and interest on debt? That situation isn't present here at RMLD because you generated enough cash to do your own reinvestment in the in the in the property, plant and equipment here at RMLD. So the thing I would pay attention to is I look at that screen, that first subtotal of numbers of twelve point nine million dollars, is that covering your acquisition and construction of capital assets? In calendar twenty-four, that the the acquisition of construction capital assets was fourteen, pardon me, thirteen point six million? I think the difference between those two numbers is, for an organization of your size and magnitude, not problematic. In fact, I think it's almost negligible. A lot of that's just timing issues. So the key metrics is, is net cash provided by operations? Is it fully funding the capital requirements of the organization?
Anything else?
I think knowing the, as Ed tried to point out, he did point out, the the terms remaining on amortizing the pension liability down to zero and the OPEB liability down to zero. I think if I'm in your chair, that's something that I would certainly want to know. Because, yes, they're they're big numbers and they can fluctuate based, as we talked a minute ago, about market returns. But the funding schedule, how many years left on the funding schedule is an important metrics for you folks to understand?
In that context, how does RMLD do, compare, if you compare RMLD with other unis? How are we doing?
Your your retirement system and by extension, your proportional share of the retirement, of the retirement system's funding is better funded than most.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted you to say.
And and on the OPEB side, I'm just going from memory, from listening to Ed tonight. I think your 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 assets in your pension plan are about five million. And I think your liability is about five million. So you're about fifty percent funded. I would say the, with certainty, that that is also better than most.
Okay.
If there was an increase by RMLD to make that contribution, you know, down to zero at some point, or to make that, not contribution, intrusion contribution to make it zero, if you outpace the Town of Reading, what would that impact be? That's another great question. And one that's, one that's very complex. I'll do my best to answer it. So Reading Retirement System is a cost-sharing plan. So the assets of of the plan are available to all members. So if you plug in another two million dollars, you would need some sort of an agreement with the other contributing members that the other two million dollars that you plugged into the retirement system would be essentially for the exclusive benefit of retirees of RMLD. Because under the laws of the Commonwealth, Chapter thirty-two, and the way cost-sharing plans work, the the assets of the pension plan are available to all members. They're not exclusive to you or another organization. To maybe say that one other way, there are cost-sharing plans and then a term that really never gets used in this, in the Commonwealth is. Kind of pooling resources together. But that situation is not what's outlined in Chapter thirty-two of the General Laws of the Commonwealth. You are a cost-sharing plan, not an agent plan. So to do what you're hinting at, my assumption is you're hinting at it.
Yeah.
You, I think it could be done. I think you'd need legal counsel. I think you'd need, you know, some some rock-solid agreements that would essentially carve out that, in my illustration, I think it's a two million, an extra two million dollar contribution, that that would be exclusive to RMLD. But as a general practice, we should stay in pace with the town. If if, if, from a, if it's a, all equal, staying on pace with the town would be the way to go. I, that's, yeah. Yeah, I'm going to say yes. It's kind of beyond my my scope.
Yeah.
But I try to put myself in other people's chairs when I'm asked questions.
As long as the town is not going the other way.
Yeah, the the pension liability, I think it's like fourteen million dollars. That's a big number, don't get me wrong.
Yeah.
But relative to to others, it's not. And with a relatively short remaining amortization period, I probably keep doing what you're doing for eight years and bring it to zero that way. But that's not my call. That's not our call.
Well, it sounds like if you wanted to accelerate, you would at least have to change some fairly significant existing structure, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So that that would be like the first step.
Yeah.
But you do have some flexibility with OPEB, given that that is RMLD-specific. And that's what the trust, that trust is strictly for RMLD. So you could, you have a little bit more flexibility there in advancing those contributions, which, like I think last year was about three hundred thousand dollars.
Been doing three hundred thousand a year for the past three years, I think.
Yeah, I think that sounds right. That you, it might be something to look a little bit more into. Because as Scott said, I think as long as you look at the amortization period and that eight years doesn't turn into ten and then twelve, if you're staying on track, then I think at least from a cash flow standpoint, the expense, it's not, you're not really taking a one big hit. And with OPEB, again, just given that that amortization period is a little bit longer, you might think about, okay, maybe we can do a little bit more of that. Might change that that period by one or two years, just at least another positive step, if you will.
Another thing, if if I may, Madam Chair, is to just piggyback on what Ed's saying. We're seeing more organizations, as their timeline for bringing their pension systems to be fully funded, developing a an approved policy at at this level that says, okay, once we're fully funded on the pension side of things, we're going to reprogram those dollars, whatever they are. You've been paying into the pension system for X number of years. And in a few years, a handful of years, you'll be fully funded. And then let's capture those dollars. I'll make up a number, call it a million bucks, totally just made it up. So when pension's fully funded, then start to reprogram that million dollars over to pension. OPEB, sorry. Sorry about that. Thank you. We're seeing that as a trend out there in 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 the governmental environment, the Commonwealth.
Karen, is there a question?
Okay.
Another question, Karen?
Unmuted, okay. Can you hear me? Okay, thanks. Yeah, no, these are great. I just wanted to comment that we are having similar conversations. The comment is that RMLD has always been closer to fully funding their pension and further ahead in OPEB than the town has been, the Town of Reading specifically has been. We are, given the tightening financial situation, we are talking about extending our fully funding of our pension out a couple of years. That was the last discussion we have, no decisions have been made. But and and we would also do, as the speaker said, you know, once that's fully funded, we would probably focus more on OPEB. We are nowhere near the same level that RMLD is at in terms of funding our OPEB. And and there is no mandate in the Commonwealth either to get it funded, so towns are all over the place. Now, I don't know whether you guys have those same OPEB regulatory issues or whether because you have your own, you're managed separately, you might have different. But, yeah, it is interesting. And I just want to let you know that, you know, as towns are, exactly as the speaker said, as towns are running into financial challenges, we're we're going to talk about, you know, maybe needing to extend the timeline. Thanks.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Thanks so much. I think we can go ahead and talk with the motion. Ray, would you want to read it?
Moved that the RMLD Board of Commissioners accept the twenty twenty-four audit report from CBIZ Advisors, fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, as presented on the recommendation of the Board of Commissioners Audit Subcommittee and the interim General Manager.
Right.
Any further expressions? Okay. This is all, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right. Let's move on to approval of meeting minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Patty.
Yeah, Patty, thank you for that.
Thank you very much, your work.
Good audit work.
Thank you.
Do you want to do?
Yeah.
Tab, meeting minutes first.
Okay, can we get a motion?
Moved that the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board approve the following twenty twenty-five open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the interim General Manager and the Board Secretary, May twenty-ninth and June twenty-fifth.
I just have a comment, so. On the, there's a typo, small typo. Just minor, but on page eighty-four, page one of the eighteen, June twenty-fifth minutes. So RMLD, it's got an E before it, it says E RMLD.
It's electric.
Our next branding change. You know.
The next, yes, multiple.
So I I read this.
They dropped something there for you.
After reading forty pages, it's hard to find what E.
Thank you. That's it, that's it.
Um, do you want to add a new?
Just want to know if there's any other discussion, but are you ready to work?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Hi.
Uh, David, motion on our side?
Moved that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve the following twenty twenty-five open session meeting minutes as presented in the recommendation of the interim General Manager and the Board Secretary for May twenty-ninth and June twenty-fifth.
Dave, just second?
I did.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
Any discussion?
I did find the E in.
Give an extra stackers. All right, all those, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Right. Logo update.
Right.
Um, I don't have any slide, but I think two, about two months ago, we were asked to do a poll of the customers and whether they liked the logo or not. So we didn't do a full survey. We we did a poll, we sent out the peak alerts, which we had. We, we did a poll, uh, when we sent out the peak alerts, uh, which we have. Um, you know, twelve, thirteen peak alerts over the last two months. And we also sent out, um, two, uh, kind of event emails, one, uh, about the heat pump webinar. And then most recently, we sent out the July, uh, newsletter. So these are all the, uh, communications that we did in terms of polling the customers. Um, and we got a hundred and forty-one responses. Uh, and then seventy-six percent of them thumbs up. So that's a little bit update.
What was the question that you asked?
We asked, do we, 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 you know, uh, we have the new logo. Do you like it or do you not like it?
Did you say, did you say which, which logo do you like? This logo or that logo?
No, it's the, the logo, we, the new, the new logo.
Oh, you didn't ask what, what they thought of the old one, relatives?
Uh, I think the ask from the board two months ago was, was to ask customer if they like the new logo or not.
You know, at this. I let my opinion be known, uh, regarding the logo. I would, I don't mind the boldness of the letter. I take it. The lettering is the correct size, the coloring. I, I, the coloring, I like the old logo, the light bulb, and I like the coloring to return to black. I think it's more pronounced. I'd like our truck branding should be specific to say RMLD, big bold letters on the side with the. Distinguished light bulb what it had previously. I think that is a return to the original light. And but with the change of going back to black lettering would be preferred, uh, in, in my opinion. I just think that. The, I think we had mentioned to Greg on the change before. I don't think it was well accepted. Um, by the board, um, I, you know, seventy people come back and say, yeah, okay, great. That's. It's, it's, it's a too small.
Seventy-six percent.
Seventy-six percent out of how many? A hundred and forty, so that's rough. Hundred and forty, um.
I mean, obviously, you want us to do a full survey and then go all the way back. We could.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't think that's necessary. I don't think doing a survey is necessary. I think it's just more of a decision of returning the logo. Back to something, again, I.
I, I do want to provide the context. If we go back to the old logo. Our website design will be, we, we cannot move forward with that because they're new design. The old logo. I don't, I don't know all the technical terms of, you know, the digital logo design, the old logo wouldn't fit into the new, um, website structure.
So the logo has a light bulb, right?
I don't, the coloring, the coloring, I, I just, again, I, I just find it hard with the color.
That was, that, that was like mixed opinion on the both, right? The color, right? So I know you, you like the black and gold.
Uh, it's like my shirt.
It's on that page, yeah.
I just would prefer that it returned to black and maybe the, a, a new, if the light bulb stays, that maybe, you know.
So we, we have the black and white version of the logo. Do you mean you'd prefer that instead of the colored ones?
I don't mind the bold lettering on that logo. If, if it's impossible to return to the original light bulb with the sunburst around it.
I think that's the one that had problems with.
I find that very difficult to absorb.
Because there was.
I, I do.
Yeah.
I, I apologize, but I.
Because it was designed thirty years ago, the file, even the file format is.
Recreate it. I don't think it's that difficult today's digital age to recreate that. I, I, I really. Does it have to be exact, but could it be close to it?
Um, I, 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 I don't know. I, I, I fully understand your, your opinion. And it's your opinion, so I don't know what to do moving forward. Should I take your opinion and then we change it back or what, what should we do?
Right?
All right. I get, I, I like the star thing also, but I also totally accept the change. It's appeared on a number of other things. It's gone out nearly eighty percent agreement, seventy-six percent. I don't think you can find seventy-six percent.
I don't think it was given a side by side, you know, it was given, hey, look at this. It wasn't a side by side. Show me, you want a survey? Show me five different options. Which one do you like? Here it is. Great, yeah, thanks.
We put out a vote for customers.
I'm, 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 no, I don't want to see another survey. I don't, I, what, what I would prefer is, again. I could live with the light bulb, but I can't live with the colors. I, I just, I, I, that, not, that is not. I just can't live with the colors. I personally, I just think if we go back to black and put black on the side of the truck. We're rebranding a monopoly, right? Uh, it, it, it's that, that's a whole other aspect of this, right?
It's facilitating the ability to go into digital format. That's the issue.
Well, if the, the light bulb works, then.
I'm standing out.
Yeah, well, and that's, so yeah, that's where he's saying the bold lettering works.
Yeah.
In terms of the standing out, but be able to go into the digital environment and have a scalable. Format and.
Well, and I think the specific concern around the color, that's not a relevance, that, you know, it's not relevant to the digital, right? We could still do the digital. I, I would. My opinion is you're always gonna have difference of opinion of colors and things like that. I think this is, um, we did, we did a survey. It was, it was overwhelmingly positive. I think that we need to monitor the color and make sure that it is working, you know, is it. Does it fade, uh, when it's on a truck, things like that? Let's just keep an eye on it. Just make sure. That, you know, in situations where that is a risk, we're defaulting to the black and white or a, a darker color, but otherwise.
Choice of materials and fading would be a choice of materials that you use for print.
Sure. Um, I don't think it's a, a thing that the board needs to.
Well, I, I.
Go back.
The way it all went down, I, I just didn't, I didn't like the way that it went down. I think, you know, it was something that we, we mentioned, uh. We didn't like it and it was still completed anyway. So I, I did, I, again, I, I, the process that it went through in order to be completed, I, I just didn't, I didn't like that process. I, you know, they do. There was.
Yeah, I, I heard, I heard that from the first time. I just wonder what, what should we do moving forward?
If, if you want to know whether a logo is having its intended effect. Then you put it before people who aren't the employees. The boss is saying, is this, do you think I did a good job? And then it's not just show people one thing and say, do you like it? You, you, you'd say, here are two logos. Which one do you prefer? Which one do you think is more forward looking? Which one is more? And then that's how you, it's called A B testing. That, that kind of question, if, if you were saying seventy-six percent said. This is more readable, this is more toward the future. Then the other one, then okay, then we'd be done, but it wa, it just was giving them one thing and saying, do you like it? So it, it doesn't really mean anything.
But, thank you. Well, I, I'd like, I'd like a really clear instruction on what to do. So you'd like me to do another poll. Would the. Board be willing to draft that question? Because I don't want to come back next time when you say, oh, did you ask the other question? So I, I really need a clear instruction. I'm really willing to, to do whatever you need us to do, but it's not clear right now.
What, what I would say is take that logo that you have, change the color to black, right? Have that.
What color?
Well, you have that color.
Change all teal to black.
Change that color, have that one, then have a black one with maybe some different coloring on a light bulb.
Just, just to clarify, you'd like to change all teal to black and keep the white, the light blue and the red. Is that, is that the?
I, I, I would almost think a yellow around the light bulb, right? To represent light.
What, what color code of the yellow you would like? Because that's, that's very specific thing that we need to know to actually present a new, new version.
Yeah. If I gave a task to you and your team, just come up. Email them to us, right? Throw a couple of different versions, put, put them out there to us before you do, you know, send them.
So I, I'm hearing, so we're redesigning the logo now. And I wanna, I, we can definitely do that if that's a board's intention.
I, I.
I do need to say. Designing the logo, the website work has to stop. Because the website won't be able to move forward.
Okay, it's a, it's a, it's a label change at the bottom of a website. It's, it's not.
Oh, no, 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 you, I, I'm trying to e- explain to you.
I understand.
The revamping of the website, which is also what the board asks us to, which we also want to do. The, the vendor that we have to, we, we, we have, uh, Civics Plus, they do the websites for most of the municipalities and M L Ps. The way they design website logo has to be all set, the very, very first step, step zero, actually. It's out of our control. So if the logo is not determined, the website work cannot continue.
Okay. I will work with you, Megan, over the next couple of weeks about colors, if that's acceptable. I, I. I just really want to change this.
No, I, I hear you and I, I respect that opinion. I. It's, it's not my favorite color in the world either, but I also think the, the organization went through their process. We can absolutely give feedback on the process and say, going forward, we want a different role in this, but it is not something that we. Necessarily have to approve and I don't want to spend more money on a poll.
Chumps change.
I don't want to, I don't want to delay a website that we're, you know, investing money to, to transition. It doesn't feel to me like the. Something that we need to tell them to go back on. That's my opinion.
I just, you know, at this point, I think it was forced through. I didn't like the way that it went through, period. I, and, uh, you know, I, I mean, I'm one person. I'm willing to take a vote of the board. Up or down.
Yeah.
Right, and then, and then we can do that, yea, yea, nee. And if we choose to accept this logo, it, it is what it is. If we want to change it to black. Then we can at least change the lettering, you know, to black and maybe work on the. I'm not against the overall design. I'm just against, right at this point, the colors selected in the design.
Just to be clear, can I ask a clarifying? But there is a, there is a black and white version of this, and I think there is a. We saw a few different like variations, all, all with this kind of colorway, but with black font options, right? So if it's a black and white print, it's gonna be a black. If, you know, it's, it's a. Shirt or something that's black and white, it's gonna be in black, right? So I don't know that that's a redesign. I think it's a choice of which kind of version of the approved logo you would prefer to see.
Correct. I would, I would prefer.
Eric, can you pull it up?
Yeah, working on getting.
Yeah, thank you. Because I think it's better to just close it right now because you.
Yeah.
Bob, you don't want to stretch this out.
Yep. We can jump to another item while they're digging it up, if that, if helpful.
Okay. Does anybody have any other, anyone who hasn't spoken?
I, I mean, I guess I'll voice. I, I really don't have an opinion. I'm fine with this logo and, yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with this logo. I, I, I would say move forward. I'm sorry, Bob.
No, that's true. I'm a, I'm a democratic guy. I did. I wore the colors today. My least favorite shirt.
Yeah, worn shirts.
See it again.
All right. Thanks for the conversation around that. Um, appreciate it. Thanks for the update. Um, all right, so why don't we move to the annual report approval? This we reviewed last time. We looked at the report. We decided we wanted to take some time to look through it. I think there were a couple of pieces of feedback. That were provided. Um, I assume, I, I think those edits were made.
Were they made?
Just confirming, yeah.
Can you go through like what, what the changes are since last time? Or is that, if it takes less than a minute or two?
Are we prepared? Would you be prepared to go through the changes that were made to the?
Yeah, there was a, there was. Few corrections that were noted in the last meeting.
Yes. Don't have that, that, I think it's some handwritten notes I weren't, I weren't, I wasn't here. Um, so I will just kind of go through by my memory if it's okay with you.
My question here is that it says from the General Manager and this is going from Greg. And is that, do we want it to go from Greg's name or should it go?
Because it is, because it's for the year twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Okay, so for twenty twenty-four, got it, okay.
Yes.
I think one comment that we had last time is we did have some comments and. The last page says insert financials and we didn't have audited financials and so we, we pushed back on the need to finalize it. Then pending the audited financials, now that we have that.
Yeah, they need to be.
And we can now sign off on, on this.
Yeah, I think there was also a change in one of the.
Yeah.
Uh, charts.
I think that's from Vivek, right? The, because we reported, uh, up to twenty twenty-two. Because there's two-year lag for the electricity emissions. So we reported the direct emissions also to twenty twenty-two, but not you requested to add the la- last two years, which we have data for. So now that's added.
Okay.
The, the data is added. So that's the first one. And then there's a kind of a wording change in, in the, uh. Uh, in this chart, if you go, can I move that? Oh, you have to move it. Oh, how do I move it? When I move to the next page.
Can you see the document page that that's on?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
In the PDF, it's one twenty-two.
So packet one twenty-two, eighteen, annual report.
Got it.
Yeah, so basically we changed the kind of wording from energy portfolio to kilowatt hour sale. So that's like, that, I think that was requested, so we just changed that. And then the label was also changed to kilowatt, uh, kilowatt hour sales. Um, one more change, change on wording is certificates and then. I think the last change we made actually was an internal edit by someone, probably, um, Greg. So I think that's all that we were asked to change.
Well, there was somewhere, and I don't know where it was now, where it said renewable energy when it meant non-carbon.
Right, right. And that's, yeah, that's the, the wording change that, uh, uh, was noted here that we changed.
Okay, then I remember Vivek asking what were in it, what does innovative grid solutions mean? And it was explained that it meant storage solutions, right?
Yeah, and, and that's in the minutes, the, the minutes.
So that still says innovative grid solutions.
That, that's okay. It's okay. I'm, I'm fine leaving it.
I don't know what emissions aligned means, but at this point, like with the logo, let's move on.
Yeah.
Whatever is in here.
It's, it's, it's good enough. It's good enough.
It's emissions aligned.
It's, it's a good report. It's a good report. It's well written. Yes. Thank you.
Logo is in white. On the back. Tin white.
All right, any further discussion on?
I get a special edition t-shirt.
Any further discussion on the contents of the annual report?
One thing about, uh, for like defining. Um, I can't remember what page it was when we talked about the year and we wanted to know. It was supposed to be on two pages, I think on one twenty-one, one twenty-two of, of the presentation. Supposed to be. A clarification of the. Timeframe, if I remember correctly from the last discussion. That it was.
That was page seventeen. That was the two years that we had.
I can't remember exactly what that was. Uh, I'm not seeing anything there.
Was it the difference between seventeen and eighteen of the, the time periods for each?
Yeah, I think it was twenty, and it was, it, it, it was very. It was like twenty twenty-two and it was, then it was mentioned in twenty twenty-four and then it was twenty twenty-two in the next.
See, the state, the state provides only up to.
Yeah, and it was just, I think we want a clarification on that, but that, that's all right. It's.
So that you're saying there was clarification in one case and not the other?
Correct.
That, that, I think I remember that.
Yeah, we want to.
I think it was the scope one emissions goes through twenty twenty-four, but scope two is only recorded back up to twenty twenty.
And it's a parenthetical that says it's released with a two-year lag.
Yeah, I think that examination is provided.
Yeah, okay, so maybe that was it. That was the change. Okay, thank you.
You got ready for your vote?
Yeah. So can we get a motion?
Moved that the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board recommend the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve the annual report. For the calendar year twenty twenty-four as presented on the recommendations of the interim General Manager. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
You think?
Uh, moved that the RMLD Board of.
Uh, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners on recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Board approve the annual report for calendar year twenty twenty four as presented on the recommendation of the interim general manager.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. All right, uh, procurement request.
Yeah, so I purchased a new fork truck. Um, we had a, put out bid for bidders. Received two bids. The lowest bid was, uh, yesterday we had was fifty thousand. The total submitted price was thirty four thousand seven, seventy dollars. Look at permission to purchase that, um, fork truck.
Twenty-two weeks delivery?
Yes.
The other one was four to five weeks.
Twenty-two weeks.
Yeah, I think the second bid, it was a couple thousand dollars difference.
Yeah.
Is that good enough, twenty-two weeks?
Yes, yeah. Your was two thousand seven.
We're not paying for it until it shows up?
What's that?
We paying for it now or when?
I would pay the receiver.
Could we receive? Okay. Any other discussion? Uh, who would like to read the motion?
I can read it. Move that bid IFB twenty twenty-five twenty for one fork truck year twenty twenty-five or newer with trade-in be awarded to WD Matthews Machinery Company for thirty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars pursuant to MGL thirty B as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder on the recommendation of the interim general manager.
Second.
All those in favor? Um, okay, discussion on E and E, the board of directors appointment. So my understanding is, um, with a, a new interim general manager, um, we have an open seat from RMLD on E and E, um, and so it's, uh, standard to nominate the general manager or interim general manager for that seat. Um, before we do that, I just wanted to ask, we've got a bunch of new board members. You know, I think we've maybe heard a little bit from E and E, but um, as part of kind of this conversation, I would love to have E and E come to one of our meetings and that just kind of share a little bit about what is it that they do for us and what are we, you know, our association with them and spending our interim general manager, future general manager's time on the board. What are we getting out of that?
Yeah, we're gonna, sorry, September.
September?
That's right.
Yep, so yeah, it's in Mike's update too, but we, um, they are planning to come and present to us in September. Mike went down there last week, I believe it was, and, um, just got a lot of good material, kind of like E and E one-on-one, which was great. So we'll do that. For this particular seat, it's because we are a part owner and it's an appointment for that seat. So, um, that's just kind of how this one works and it's usually, it's all GMs and IGMs. The appointment's normally three years. We made this one year, just, um, as it's an interim appointment. And then when the new, um, GM is appointed or hired, then we'll make that person the chair. It's usually how it goes.
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I just, yeah, sorry, just a quick question. Is there something we could read some material or something on, on E and E? Just for, even for in preparation for that particular meeting so that we can understand. I'm not sure really what it is.
That's a power point I could send you.
Yeah, something like that, uh, just to get a high level idea. You said we own or part owners, you know, what does that mean?
Eight point three-three percent.
Yeah.
Bought into the company.
So.
So pretty much they do, they do, um, the majority of, uh, the power purchasing for us and they do, um, they offer other things like, uh, um, different programs, like, uh, if you, if you want to buy a battery, they review the, the battery program for, for you as well, like help negotiate prices for you, um, uh, energy efficiency savings, stuff like that. They have different programs they offer as well.
Okay, so we, we, we own a stake?
Yes.
In this entity?
I guess it was purchased, um, I think by only for, I think an investment of, uh, three hundred thousand. The same now it's worth, I think around six ninety. It's gone up and down, so.
Yeah, so I think, I think there are just questions around, okay, you know, kind of what does that look like? Are we getting a?
Yeah, the cost.
Are we getting compensated for our ownership stake? How does E and E get compensated? I think they're a for-profit organization, so what does that mean? So I think having E and E come and share their strategy, their benefits or approach that they use would be, would be helpful.
I agree.
That would be good. I.
Yeah, we have three out of five of us are somewhat new. Uh, and actually, it's a great idea. Was there a reason why we can't do this at the next meeting?
Yes, um, the only reason is because there is an E and E board meeting on August sixth, which Mike has been asked to attend. And in order to attend and participate in that meeting, he needs to be appointed.
Oh, I think, no. So we'll put, no, I think a question like E and E coming August instead of in September.
But we're just saying for this, for this, yeah, let's, I mean, if you don't mind scheduling it for August, Pam.
Yeah, I don't know that we have a ton, besides the GM, uh, search, I'm not sure how much we'll have on the agenda for August. So if they're able to make the August meeting, that would be great.
Yeah, because I think the only thing, Megan, we are thinking about maybe doing a customer survey presentation then, but we could do that in September if needed to.
Right, I think we, yeah, we plan for September.
Oh, we do plans. Yeah, so, um, we can reach out.
Yeah, let's, yeah, that would be great.
Thank you. Um, is there any other discussion around the nomination or appointment?
I, I think it makes sense to be fully engaged because we're, we're already owners there.
Yeah.
So you, you have proper representation.
Side of our ownership.
So.
So, so what's your point?
Point is.
Do it.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, it's, it's something we regularly do and yet they're very much a major player in a lot of what RMLD does and buys and a lot of our contracts and their lobbying positions are also potentially of interest. They lobby for things on Beacon Hill. Um, they're very involved, so.
Actually, I think that's a really good reason to kind of push for August if we keep, if that is ahead of the next legislative session, I think we're
With their lobbying.
Be helpful to understand what, what their position is on some of those.
Some issues there out there now, so.
Would it make sense to actually kind of, uh, point out what, what kind of, they, they, they provide a lot. I think Max was there for maybe three hours or so to listen to their presentation. So maybe it, it would be helpful if you're like, you really want them to hear about legislate the, uh, uh, work or you really want to hear about, you know, something else, power supply?
And ask questions. Maybe they can be here and explain the high level, the one-on-one, and we can ask questions.
I'm sure they can supply like a power point ahead of time too.
Yeah, I, I, I think there might be a multi, multi-meeting type thing for sure. You're not going to get it all in one. And I think, you know, we're going to be a couple of that.
Yeah, I mean, again, if there's, if, ahead of the meeting, if they want some guidance on what would be most impactful, like, I'm happy to talk to them to give them some guidance or, you know, ask one of the other board members to do that.
And I have, I'm gonna send, Mike, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's okay to send these. Um, I'm gonna send along five presentations that they've, um, shared. And then maybe after you guys, you could peek at those, you'll have, you know, areas of interest or things as well.
And internally, we can also, I don't know what's the process, um, we can send you like what we currently do with them. Like just so those, so they don't have to repeat what they do for, for us right now.
Yeah.
So in addition to being a owner, we should know this is this much. In addition to being an equity owner, we make a payment every year?
Yes.
See, what is that?
Yes. Yes. I just, they're all, you wanna, you, oh.
What is the amount of that?
Yeah, so, uh, each month it will add up to uh, almost forty thousand.
So half of the year, all quarter.
Yeah.
Is it a percentage of power purchase? It's a straight payment?
Uh, there's a, there are two, two straight payments. One is on power supply services, mo- most of the, uh, uh, wholesale market, uh, services for us. The others, uh, uh, sort of fixed payment is on energy efficiency, even though you, even if you don't take any programs from them as a owner, you still pay, uh, twenty-four hundred each month. And then if you do take a program, you pay extra.
Well, I think you already.
Monthly payment is basically the size of your investment in the equally spread out, like some small municipal department as well, so.
And then when they, when they, when they bring power supply contracts to us. So as a for-profit entity, this is one question that I know I would like to ask is, what is it, how are they making money from the power supply contract, if any, that we're
Yeah.
approving, like, guys, what is that? How does that work?
They, uh, so they, they actually engage, uh, uh, a legal firm to negotiate the contract. So the, the, the kind of the theory behind this is they can represent multiple MLPs. So it's better bargaining and negotiating power with the suppliers, so hopefully lower the price of the PPAs. Um, so for that expense, they will allocate to each participant, including MLPs. And then, um, after, if we sign up for one of those PPAs, uh, we'll pay them a regular monthly fee for them to basically, they call it manage the contract and then track the certificates. So they, uh, transact all the certificates for us.
Oh.
Yeah, on the, on PPAs that we have.
Certificate purchases and sales?
Yes.
Why do we need them to do that?
I don't know. I didn't make any decisions.
So some, yes.
That was part of the package of the service.
I think the questions are probably going to be around, yeah, what are the services? What are the fees for the services? What are the benefits that we're getting for those services? You know, the ownership stake value's gone up? Are we getting some sort of dividend for that? Um, and I think then probably more internal conversations. Once we understand that, you know, internally, do we believe we're getting the value for that, um, investment? But I think we need to understand what that investment is and what the services are first before we can have that conversation.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we're gonna stay right?
No, no, I'm.
Any other discussion or are we ready to read the motion?
You read the motion?
All right.
That pursuant to section three point two of the operating agreement of Energy New England LLC, Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners hereby appoint Michael O'Neil as Class B Director of Energy New England LLC Board of Directors for a term of one year.
Second.
All those in favor?
What to do?
Congratulations, Michael. We got a big summer for you.
All right.
Can I ask one more question? But what, what do the board of directors do? Like, what do you, what do you have to do on August sixth? Like, what's the agenda?
No, so they'll go and do things that are for public consumption. They'll review, uh, what they, what they're working on, some things that are behind the scenes, like, I guess they'll hand out all the pamphlets and information, kind of review it, and then you kind of talk like, maybe for something like this, you think this is a good initiative for them to push forward and stuff like that. And then they'll take it back, like, they don't want it to, to the public, because, uh, something is like, uh, could be, um, like somewhere that was buying power, they could be a good investment, kind of talk about that stuff, I guess. Because they don't want to, you know, people to know that, what they're, what they're looking.
Power supply can be executive session.
Yeah.
Right. Because they are a public entity like an MLP. They're an MLP cooperative.
Yeah.
They are a public entity, just like we are, but they're a cooperative of MLPs. So anyway.
They're LLC, so.
They're, they're that too, but they are legally a cooperative of it.
They do do work for private sector as well. There's T, T contracts in, in the IRA as well. So any profit that, that, uh, they make off that goes back to the company.
Okay, on to your IGM update.
Okay. Uh, yeah, so as far as team members, uh, the management teams, you hold regular meetings, uh, review the workload, the projects. Uh, team, everything's going, uh, pretty steady right now, uh, no major issues. Um, recruitment, uh, director of finance and account, we put that on hold, uh, wait until after the budget. Uh, Patty's been the acting director right now, is doing a very good job and she's comfortable as she is. And, uh, materials manager, we're gonna, that's one we're gonna post. That was, uh, Paulo Larry, recently retired. Well, probably posting that within the next couple of weeks. Uh, the union contract, so, uh, we had a mediation session, IBW, um, we're gonna schedule a second one. Uh, kind of similar process, probably going to follow LMS and CT, uh, KP Law is supporting us on that as well. Uh, on all those contracts, um, one thing we need to probably do is, uh, schedule an executive session to talk about the contracts. So I don't know if we could, may have settled something like that next, so we could do something.
Oh, in, in between meetings?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Then, uh, go with some parameters and get some feedback.
Okay, I know we had, we could talk about it in scheduling maybe, but we did have like a tentative mid-August meeting before NEPA. Is that?
Yeah, we did have, I think we, we forget it before August twelfth, it'd be better. August twelfth is the second meeting, so.
Okay.
Second meeting, uh, with the IBW, media, immediate.
Okay.
So it helps to get some clarity and some things.
Let's make sure we talk about that scheduling. Okay.
Um, uh, the weather, like I said before, uh, we really haven't had too many, uh, um, setbacks due to, uh, the heat or, uh, any storms, um, we are watching, uh, the weather for, uh, uh, Friday with a high heat and a chance of thunderstorms in the afternoon, especially if you're on Friday afternoon. Um, a fleet update, um, we said we received our material handler with, uh, the electric and hydraulic PTO, that's not, not on the road yet. It'll be on the road. It's, it's here in the yard, but it'll be on the road, uh, within a couple of days. And, uh, the second one should be in any, any time now, within the next couple of weeks. So those, those are the purchases. Uh, the projects, AMI metering, so, uh, we have both five, uh, ITR meters that showed up, uh, ITs are working on, uh, the collectors program and, uh, should be getting a bunch of meters, I think, um, supposed to be around five hundred, five hundred of them in August for our pilot. Once we get the collectors, I think, set up, we'll start rolling some of those out for a pilot and do some testing on them. Um, station six, like I said, uh, actually earlier they asked about it, uh, the transformers are on site, that they've been, uh, uh, assembled and filled with oil, uh, the testing's ongoing. Uh, we did have a couple of issues. One of them was missing, wrong size radiated, so waiting on Virginia transformer to fabricate those and they'll go to install them. Also, Virginia test, Virginia transform was going to come up and, uh, do some additional testing with transformers as well. So that's, uh, scheduled for the next couple of weeks. Yeah, the budget, uh, that's scheduled for, uh, October, early November. And then, uh, E and E will, uh, we'll try to get them, uh, for us August. Get them in here. And, uh, the meme annual meeting, that's, uh, September eighteenth to nineteenth in Plymouth. Board members are invited. And, uh, also we met with, um, uh, running Tom Manager and, uh, Tom Manager last week also, so. Yeah, talked to Ray, talked about the solar, so we're supporting the projects.
Uh, do you have any, do you know any more about the meme meeting that's two days? Do you have an agenda or?
I have some information.
Okay.
I don't think they have an agenda out yet.
Does anybody go to last year's meeting? No.
Yeah, mine.
I don't know what that would be.
No.
Covering.
I don't know.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, that's September eighteenth and nineteenth, um, it's agenda's in development, but one of the confirmed speakers is the new telecommunications utilities and energy committee chairman, um, Representative Mark Cuzak of Braintree. Um, it's just a good meeting where you guys can network with other GMs and as they drop the agenda, that's kind of where it's at. It's in Plymouth.
What, one of the things that the MLCA is trying to do is be a part of meme in which they would be provide us with some administrative support like website and communication and finance, financial help. Um, otherwise we would function as a separate committee or, or separate organization within it. That discussion's been ongoing, uh, whether it gets to the point where a topic at this annual meeting, I'm not sure. Um, but we've had meetings with them and that is a plan to give us a home.
Ray, you got, I got a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
For the, um, for, for that group, how do you avoid a quorum?
Um, it comes under the exemption. We're not talking about business of any one utility. And if it got into that, we would interrupt that discussion. So that it is, it comes under the heading of training and education. And so we bring in groups and, and talk about broad topics, which is difficult to, like a new person coming in, what is E and E and, and what programs are out there and what's legislative? To take up a meeting time to get all the basics is difficult. But if we have monthly meetings where these topics come up and you can learn about them, um, then you, you avoid, you avoid forum because you're not talking about a, a specific utilities, um, questions, it's, it's background, it's education. Thank you.
Anything else, Mike?
I had said.
Oh, so sorry, if you could just let me know if anyone's interested in attending me, I just need to let them know. Even if you're not sure, but you're kind of interested.
I like, I would like to learn more.
Yeah.
Okay.
Be covered, so yeah. Okay, um next topic is GM search process. Um so couple of things that we have to do with this, um our focus for these discussions is Alignment on the process and appointment of a subcommittee, if if we agree that will be part of the process. Um and then review and approval of the job advertisement strategy as well as the description. Um before I start talking, do you wanna cover anything here, Susan, or?
I I don't need to speak yet, um Erica put together this fantastic schedule for us and um I can speak some more when you get to the, if anyone has the questions about the evidence.
So yeah, Susan and I worked together and and of course with Erica and Aaron on on what this should look like, we leveraged as much as possible What has been done in the past, so I think the packet actually includes Where we have things like a a change in the job description or a change of the posting plan. You can actually see the red lines of what is different now versus the last time we went through this process. Um but essentially, the, if you look at page one of the Topic, page one thirty-eight of the full packet. Um the recommendation is that um we have a preliminary screening committee Um who would go through the initial interview process um and would recommend A set of candidates for uh final interview by the board. Um It does not have to be three, we kind of, I think we said somewhere between three and five would be ideal, but it really is up to the subcommittee how many we want to recommend Um to go to um public uh interview. Um in terms of the uh Timeline, that is on page two. So objective would be to have the search process, the committee, the advertisement and the description approved tonight. Um then we would post Monday and have the job posting open for four weeks. Um we would also have the committee kickoff next week. Um and ensure that we have a plan for what would the initial interviews look like, what topics are we gonna cover, we need to be consistent about that. Um and align on what the attributes are and all of those things that we're looking for. Um and then that application window would close uh the week of the twenty-fifth. Ads applications come in, the committee can review those applications. I think the thinking is that committee would meet weekly To check in on the status of the application process. Um and prepare for discussions, and if we need to decide on things like Maybe we need more time, or maybe we need to clarify something, we we can do that. Um then the discussion of the applications would be the week following that closure of the application window. The interviews would happen the first half of September, that's on the next page. Um and we would ideally bring candidates uh to final VOC interviews early October.
That's pretty fast.
That is.
Yeah. Last time and Met quite regularly, but it took a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We met, we yeah, we we cracked through and we thought we were going fast, yeah, yeah.
So I
It was a lot of applicants, so it was probably what, fifty?
Yeah.
Last time.
I'm sorry, you can finish.
Uh and and then, yeah, then we did in-person interviews, yeah, we narrowed it down, we did in-person, and then we cut down to the finalists and Yeah, so very, very similar to.
Very much, pretty much what how this is like though.
Yes, exactly. We used that as the template, for sure. So I guess the question is, do we feel like we need to, from the start, Allocate more time to this timeline, or do we want to leave ourselves some freedom to extend? If we're not seeing The applications that we need, or that we feel good about, or that we need more time to prepare for interviews?
I I I think that you 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 have to push based on what you get, right? And and then and then you you'll you'll see what, see what comes in. Um and then um trying to get through Um All of those um in two, uh you know, that two-week period Does seem to be aggressive.
Which one are you talking, which?
I'm talking about, you have Labor Day, week six, weeks preliminary, virtual screening, I did my first round applicants. You have a holiday weekend in there. Um yeah, that is going to be busy, so I'm I I would suggest that you would almost be Um screening, at least screening through September. And then beginning in October, you might have your first first rounds Of um interviews, and that will take uh depending on how many you're gonna go through. Um it's gonna take longer than two weeks.
Okay.
Um so.
So I think we're saying preliminary virtual screenings would go, would extend by a week?
At least.
Okay. And then from there, that that also means identify first round applicants as extending by a week. And then first round interviews, and I think I missed a step in that my previous comment, it's the screening And then it's the kind of more formal interview, but again, still in committee. Um that's also two weeks, so we're saying potentially that would also be an extra, extra week.
The, yeah, if you could get to two people a week, I think that would be out of six, that's three weeks, that's pretty aggressive.
Would the interview all be at night too?
Yes.
Right, so.
Yeah, it's in, we did it at the library, a neutral site. Um we use the Reading Public Library, it it can, it can be anywhere, but um We ended up booking the room at the, at the library last time, so that that ended up working.
Okay.
So just to clarify, sorry, you're saying you wanna do three weeks for preliminary virtual screenings, like phone screens? And then three weeks, then you have identify first round applicants, also three weeks, cause you're gonna mirror those two?
Correct.
Okay, so we're gonna extend that, and then first round interviews also?
An additional week, correct. So that would start the week of the twenty, let's say twenty-first or so, twenty-second?
Well, you're
Cause we've already except of 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 September, and then that's going into the second week of October.
So.
So that'll end week eleven, October tenth.
You're shifting by three weeks.
So right now, we're shifting by two weeks. So that means by October tenth, we have the finalist applications identified.
I thought you were.
One plus two.
Yeah, I, right, so one week. It's one week to the virtual screenings in the first round, that's its concurrent process, that's one week. And then you're adding another week to the first round interviews. That's two additional weeks, yeah.
Um quick question, would you like us to make these edits following this and send it, or do you wanna edit the slide quick and approve it?
Um What I would say is, let's take, take the feedback and then let's get the committee set up and the committee can have that as their first assignment, okay?
And and I think, I know we have um reference checks, those can be concurrent. Right, so you could take that time for interviews and Um identify, it doesn't, you know.
So the thinking is um We really should reference check only those who are gonna be finalists, just From our timing and not to waste their time.
If you're gonna call them their current employer, um that may trigger some stuff, so you might wanna wait till the finalists, cause then that's public information anyways.
Right, right. But that we, you know, if, you know, have prepared some, you know, something came back, well, it said, no, that didn't work out From a reference text standpoint, we're not then all, that we're not then bringing them to a public forum, like where that happens, that we could, we could downselect from there if we need to. But I think what that says is the week of The twentieth of October is when we would be starting the final interviews. So really what kind of we're talking about, like by November first essentially is when we have the candidates selected. Um which I think is important that we try to get to that point before the holiday period.
I just, I I I can just tell you from experience, this was at at least a sixty-hour effort From us, I I would say at a minimum, so that type of time.
Subcommittee members or all?
Subcommittee.
Yeah, okay, it's important for anybody who wants to be on this.
Yeah, no, it was intense, it was, it was
Yeah.
It was a lot um to 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 be on a a part of that committee, so You are busy a couple nights a week, at least um Um to doing that work, so if you're, you know, anybody's in, you know, that it was a time commitment. Um from from that perspective. Uh I also think um I knew, I knew you had it in here on page one, um The contract negotiations uh and um So I would like to say that there could be a second subcommittee And that second subcommittee could focus on the contract.
Hmm.
While in parallel, while you're looking for a candidate, another subcommittee could be focused on The um contract, which
So like key terms and conditions that we want to ensure are covered and partnering with KP Law for example.
Correct, and and I think that's, that's something that that if we, you want that Not to work that out at the end, you want that, you wanna have that in parallel, and I think that could take such significant amount of time.
Great idea.
Yeah.
I think.
I like that too, cause also it's something where in the interviews, it's like, hey, we'd like to make sure the contract says X, is that a problem for you? You know, like something that we wanna make sure is in there or isn't in there. Um potentially.
Yeah, like.
Or or whether it's expressed that way or not.
Right, I think the idea of having the
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number four, so we already have a structure for a GM contract committee and
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And you can do some relative, they can at least do some deep diving into others' previous current.
Yep.
And and then create, create one that when we're ready, that would be something at today's point, I think. Seeing that as part of the final candidate um would be something I think would be important for that person. I'm not saying it's offering the job, but this is the contract that you're gonna enter into, so I think that that would be um Something that would be very, very important to have solidified before.
Yes.
Before that happens.
And that, and that, this is of course, when the time comes, but when we vote to whoever we recommend, it's move to enter contract negotiations with X. As opposed to move that this is the GM and only then you've already.
Which is, I think, what, yeah, that's how, that's how we approached it, yeah. They mostly someone too, so.
It actually isn't, we we we, but that's Oh, oh, Mike, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay, so we'll add the subcommittee for contract negotiation or contract drafting.
Contract drafting.
Contract.
It's a GM.
GF contract.
Committee, I think it was.
Yeah, GM contract, love it.
And I think, as before, I would put one member with a cab.
Yeah, so let's, so we have the two subcommittees then, um so that's, that's great, and these are These would be executive sessions uh for both of these uh topics, yes?
Yes and no, um. So you'll do, so the GM search committee and yes, like mostly will be done in executive session. There are things that you will not be able to do in executive session. One thing I noted in here on the first page, um with this little
Yeah.
Um, gonna be questions?
Yes, so that was a point last time we just might wanna consider, um you're not Open meeting prohibits you from creating them in executive session, but there might be an exemption on that had been discussed with KP Law before. Just like a note, but generally, your meetings will be regular session and then you'll enter executive accordingly.
So let's just take the action that if we're, if we, if we cannot create them in executive session, Then we should put that on the agenda for August. And if Susan, we could talk about having a set of questions again for kind of prelim- preliminary screening and then first round.
And you can have, you can even have your committee draft all those and then recommend it to you at the August meeting as a whole court as well, okay?
Yeah, I don't recall that we did that, I I we we did not do that In the first search. We did not, we didn't wanna expose, e- expose any questions In a public forum, because then then you can, if you're paying attention, you can go back and look, so.
Which is part of the argument for keeping it in executive, but I definitely think it's something we'll wanna discuss with.
Yeah, uh uh so, uh yeah, yeah, definitely, it, you, to be fair, you ask the same questions of every candidate.
Yes.
But you know, that's the whole, the whole point is to draw something out while you're having those discussions, right? I mean, that's the That's the, the questions are supposed to be designed to be interactive. Um but, but yeah, no, we did, we did not, the the final, just as we did on the last one, yeah, we They're they're public, cause we put them out there, but you can't, you can't give them out there ahead of time, like, I don't agree with that, sorry.
So Erica, what is the point that you're making that in, oh, you cannot formulate questions in executive session?
Yeah, so you just generally, that's the guidance on just before you decide to do or not do that. I would just check with KP Law and then make what is going on, because we have been doing them in public. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, to just make sure that it's properly done during the Um it actually, I think, is a specific bullet on the subcommittee checklist on from the state, so I'll sum it to you guys as well.
Uh good, good point, uh cause, yeah.
Yep. Okay, so we'll proceed uh to vote to form um Both the search committee and the contract committee. Um let's just talk briefly about the membership of each, um You know, certainly the recommendation would be to uh RMLD commissioner, commissioners and one cab member for each of these. Um Susan would also be a non-voting member of the committee uh to help move us through the process. Um and then we also have some optional um participants. Maybe meeting, uh municipal utility expert or maybe an existing RMLD employee. Um Obviously, the more people we have participate, the more schedules we have to work with, which makes it hard. Um so I think we should be super thoughtful about, again, the time commitment we're asking somebody to jump into as well as scheduling. Um, does anybody have a particular opinion around any of the optional participants?
Have we, last name, did we have an external utility expert?
No, but the two times before there was, there was, the two times before had um an employee representative and a outside person. They were actually pretty good big committees, but then I think in twenty twenty-two, it went down to just the basics.
Okay.
Well, so when Colleen was hired, there was the larger
Yeah.
Committee?
Do we know how long that process took?
That was
Down to the wall.
That, I I I wasn't. That on um, when Colleen was hired, the search committee, when when they had um, we had to do fill. So you have to
John Stepford was involved, right?
I was here for that, now, so what's the specific question, when she was hired?
We have, what was the process when we used outside experts?
Oh.
Reported, so. Two most recent, would it make sense to do that again or not?
And they had an employee on the search committee as well, which
Did they?
So one, one thing on that one, I, uh Susan and I discussed this as well as um Uh it's not on the agenda, but we we, we are planning to release another employee survey. Um and so there's an opportunity potentially to ask for input around like qualities of a general manager as part of that survey. And use that as input.
I think that
That still
Yes.
So that could be an alternative to having, asking an employee to spend sixty hours of their time in the evening.
That sounds, but you just think those.
Would the outside person be a paid consultant?
Only if you elected to hire an outside paid consultant.
I can't see somebody doing it for free for sixty hours.
You know, you can tap other general managers to to volunteer their time.
Hmm, yeah, that's, I will say the biggest challenge I've ever had with all this committee type stuff Is just getting everyone to be able to attend, and it's, that's what delays the process more than anything else. And, you know, to to, you don't wanna go ahead without them, cause you wanna give everybody their ability to have their say in the process and You know, that's where you, you really have to have people fully engaged. And just to go back to one second, the public body checklist for executive session, just so you know where we got that. One of the last bullets here is the One of the last bullets here is the preliminary screening committee may not enter executive session to prepare questions, to ask candidates. Or to discuss the review process. Such discussions must occur in open session. So we will double check with KP Law because I do, I totally understand your concern and it's, it's ours too. And.
And you're not a, you're a, you're not a core. You're, you're technically a subcommittee, right? So. Is it, is it, I don't know if it's, it's not.
You're still going, you're going though executive session, so you have to have reasons to go to executive session and you have to go by those.
Yeah, it always gets into a quagmire, right? So it, but the whole, the whole point of it is to. Ask questions that someone doesn't know, right? That's the. Some of it.
And I would just stress one other thing, please, everybody here, when we do start getting resumes and. Keep in mind, all of the candidates are not public. No, no one should mention a name. No one should reference a community. I can't stress that enough. It is really, really important to the candidates and I, I just didn't say this right now. They're listening. We will be very sensitive with their information and it will be kept. Non-public until they choose to go public, right? Should they make it to the second round.
Never hunting to do.
The initial interviews, you're not gonna do them through Teams calls, you're gonna bring them in person? Cause your Teams calls, you've been banging a lot faster than in person and more flexible people.
That was the initial screening we did through Teams and then we picked, out of that, we picked people that we wanted to bring in.
For the first round.
First round in person.
It says virtual, preliminary virtual screening.
Yeah.
So that suggests that you would be teams.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then you get your first round applicants.
I think that makes sense.
That was.
Yep. Okay, so why don't we focus for a second on, um, nominations for these two committees? Um, so unless anybody has any other comments on the makeup of the committees, we'll focus on the. Two vote BOC members and one cab member. We look, start with the, um, screening committee. Anybody have a nomination for themselves or someone else?
I know me visit for the cab representative.
Would, would you accept? Okay. Blunt, um, about on board.
Oh, I'll be on the screening committee.
I, I, I'll do either or, screening and or.
Or I'll be nominating people.
Yeah, whatever you want to do.
I nominate Dave for the contracts.
Okay.
I accept that. I, I think you'd be, well, I mean, I, probably any of us would want to be on the screening committee.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I don't know.
Yes.
Scared, scared me with the sixty hours there.
And you can do meetings not at night. We do them in the morning at lunch if you want them.
We did meet in the middle of the day a couple of times.
Yes.
You'll be in the car.
Yeah.
Can do, but rule of thumb, is anybody not interested? Start there.
I mean, I, I would be, um, happy to participate on the contract committee. I don't think that would be.
I'd probably be more inclined on the contract side too, if there's others who are so inclined on the screening.
Sounds like we have a consensus.
Well, so, okay.
So I'll be on the.
So maybe Dave and Reg's contract. And Ray and Bob screening.
That sounds like a zombie show.
It does.
Okay.
Is that what you would do?
Did you have one?
No, you're, you're a glutton for it.
Yeah, exactly.
How about, um, contract?
I'm not interested in a contract. So I don't know if you are, if we want to, I'll make the person slide here.
I can't say that I would do it, but if there's nobody else, then I'll, you know, step up to the fight. He's already doing one, so.
Right. Do you want, I was gonna say, do we, do we, does the cab feel, uh, that they want to have a representative on the contract?
We really wouldn't have a vote anyways, right? We would just be.
You would. Disregard it.
I got, I think we'll take you up on that.
No, no cab participation.
Ask Charlie, you can ask Charlie if he wants to do it, but.
We can email him and.
Yeah.
Yeah, he can always add him later, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would just, the one thing I would suggest is that we come out with four or five. Because give, give the full board more than just three.
Yeah, I don't think we restricted it to three.
And you could have three if, he's not, or whatever, you'd have three commissioners on it. I mean.
Uh, we can't have three commissioners. So it does, I, I think we should, um. I think we should just make sure we leave ourselves room in this process. It's, it's like a target number, but it could be more than that.
But you could also put in a substitute, right? For each, you have a subcommittee, it's two people, but you also have an alternate, so.
Yes, sorry, we're, we're talking about candidate numbers. But I do agree with you, i- if, if that, is that allowed to have a substitute committee member? If that feels. It feels like it's.
Ask KP Law, right? Alternate juror, right? Yeah, but the alternate juror sits through the entire hearing. Yeah.
Only some.
And that, that's, that would be a problem.
So my only, as the, as the. Pacino of the board at this point, he would say, this is like the only thing we do. Where it's basically, that's the one thing we do on the DS and we have some other things that we do, but they don't. They don't add up to a lot. They do, but, um. My point being that the full board should have a good slate to choose from and. It should be all five that really is thinking about. And that the screening committee is really just screening, like, okay, obviously these folks aren't.
Well, it's screening in its first round.
Sure.
So I think the point is, we don't have to force ourselves to three if there's four fabulous candidates.
Exactly.
So.
I guess I would say.
But we, we are not going to just have two.
Sure.
You know, that, so we, we need to, it's like a three to five is ideal.
Yeah, and I, I guess I would just tweak that to say aim for five, but if you don't have five, then don't bring five forward. You know, and then we'd have the, it also could maybe save you time because you're not gnashing teeth over, over. It makes your job easier.
So for the subcommittee members is that direction clear enough?
Would you guys agree with it or is it?
Do you want to have a chair?
I, I don't think we can make that decision until we see who the applicants are.
Sure.
I mean, if. You know, on, on the applicant's side. They're now coming into a public session where they're opening themselves out to job and career change and whatever.
Yeah, that's true.
And, and if it's only a fifteen or ten percent chance you're going to get the job. Do you really want to expose yourself to that sort of public presentation? So. So yes, I, I think three sort of a minimum. I think five. Starts to get. A lot more choices, but what, what the number is, I think. Will depend on what we get for applicants and, and, and there's, there are a lot of, lot of value.
That you can have in bringing that forward. You asked a different question around the chair. I think that will be part of the subcommittee.
That's the first thing we did in the first meeting.
Okay.
There've been other times where. The subcommittee chair was assigned, yeah. Okay.
Okay, so, um. We're going to form the, let's talk about the. A second.
Now that we've had the discussion, do we want to go back and read the motions?
Yeah, that's what I'm just trying to make sure I understand what this first motion is. Appointed preliminary screening committee.
And.
And contract committee. Um, okay, so we're going to form those two committees. Amen, yeah, just add that.
Move that the Board of Commissioners appoint a preliminary screening committee and a contracts committee. For the consideration of applicants and interviews for the GM position.
Wait one second.
Thank you.
Close the favor. Okay, so formed, um, okay, and then so who wants to? Move for.
I moved that the Board of Commissioners appoint, um, Ray Porter and.
Uh.
Calder. Calder, sorry, Bob. Um, to the screening committee and Dave Talbert and Rick. It's Watson, uh, to the, uh, contract committee, um, for the general manager search. Sorry, guys, I really should get to know you guys someday.
You want one second, Ben?
What's a month's not enough?
All those favor.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Uh, so, uh, move that the Citizens Advisory Board appoint Quebec to the General Manager Search Committee.
Okay. Okay. Excellent, we are formed. Um, okay, so then we have two additional documents. One is the GM job advertisement. And the second is the job description. I don't think we need a motion on this, but we just want feedback or consensus. I know this was sent out. Uh, for feedback direct to Susan. Anything that you wanted to clarify?
You wanted to just quickly, I'll just run through what was changed.
Where is what Peyton said again in the book?
So one forty, one two is the advertisement. And you'll see the current recommended one and then the one from last time with edit.
Right, so the edits, we, we just obviously changed some. Normal numbers that we just had to update, a number of, um, customers we were serving and employees we had and that kind of thing. Um, the salary, I expect you'll have a little more discussion about that here, but with, that was something we put in because there is. Um, new, new, uh, legislation going in this fall about.
Actually, I think, yeah, that's a little hint.
Are you guys with us now?
Sorry.
You there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Page one forty-six, right?
One forty-two.
One forty-two.
I just didn't want to be rude. Um, but there is new legislation coming out about, you know, transparency in pay. Um, Pam and I had talked this over. I had looked at some data of the MLPs that. We would compare ourselves to in any way, you know, like. A little smaller, a little larger, we took out the outlier of the one that has gas, electric and, um, telecom. And we kind of just said, what are all the salaries in this group thirteen MLPs that were. Ranging from two twenty-five to two seventy-five. And, um, so we didn't, we didn't do anything more than that, so that's kind of what the range is right here. Um, and you guys may want to discuss that amongst the, the group here tonight. That's up to you. Um, the other things that I changed just slightly, um. Our old. Advertisements set references and salary requirements. Um, we, for legal reasons, we like to use a, an employment application to gather references. Because it requires the applicant to certify what they're saying is. True and can be checked by us. And so I opted to, instead of getting a list of references to get. References that were on an application. The application gives me more information to later do a background check as well. Um, so that's one of the things that I changed and then the other was to, um, also ask for a cover letter. Um, we had not asked for that in our previous one. The other, the previous applica- the previous, um, advertisement that I saw too, for some reason was very specific to in-house candidates. So I think that was kind of part of what required a little bit of changes here for us. And I did put a little language as far as the new length of where to find instruction, et cetera, along with the deadline. Um, for that information to come back to us and. To include some of the contingencies, because when we were dealing with only internal candidates, obviously those people had been already vetted. Tested, met the contingencies to working at RMLD. And I wanted to be sure that any applicant understands the testing and everything that is required of this particular position.
Full, full disclosure, I did talk to Susan about, um. References and, and I, my fear was we would see the references, because I. When you get an applicant, you like those, the references, but it's not going to interfere.
Nope, I will make sure everyone sees and the references that we check. Everybody can share that information, but it has to be, um, it has to be done in the, um. Executive session, because we're going to be, I, I'm going to have to check on that too, when that's going to hit exactly, because. It may actually come out when they become a public candidate. Um, I may be doing it when they agree to go on to the next one as a contingency to go on, right?
Yeah, you don't want to do reference checks before they're, they're like a final candidate.
Well, that's, this is the point I was making too, is that you don't really want, I, we, we do a background check and reference checks. The background check is the last thing, it happens when they're, you know, we're ready to offer them a job and those are the contingencies. To coming aboard as an employee and that file goes into your personnel file and.
We do like, uh, uh, on the venture side, we do background check right upfront. You want to know there's no. Hidden skeletons right up there. So you should, I mean, I would do that upfront, because if you can. That's all the police records and all that, right?
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that too early. I mean, if we've got twenty applications, we don't need to do twenty background checks. Ten of them are just going to be.
Yeah, no, but, but, but fair enough, but you, you, you don't want to, you don't want to, you don't want to nominate anyone.
Oh, yeah.
Who'd be flagged.
So you're suggesting that the background check and the references are done at the same time?
No, the reference checks are done when you have a serious candidate. Before you choose someone to be a serious candidate, you've already done the background check.
Um, I would think anybody who's putting in for this job, really, their background check's going to be clear anyway. I don't think there's a big risk there.
You never know.
You, you never know.
No, 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 please, don't, 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 don't.
No, I, I, you know, a driving license.
It also does cost money to do.
It does.
So I would, I would also, I would, I, I see your point, like maybe we don't go to a contract without that done, but. We, we should probably narrow the candidate pool for.
I can vet this a little further. My caution with that is the background check isn't something I'm going to discuss in a meeting, you know what I mean? So for me, it's just really part of the, the closure on the candidate to make sure that. We've, we've checked everything in the end, because there's a tendency that if I'm doing it while we're. You don't use it to determine whether they can be a candidate, but to determine that they cannot be a candidate.
Well, I think, I guess that's probably the point is, is we don't want to necessarily bring somebody to a public forum. And interview them as a potential one of three or four or five final candidates if they're not going to pass the background check, so.
So what I, 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 what I can do is I can talk to my colleague. Who does, because for, for, for us, he, he does it, that's the first thing he does. And I want to know if there is a free analysis one can do to make sure people who are who they are. You know, people.
This can be worked out also, right, as part of the process?
We don't.
Yeah. We can talk about it with an actual committee, that's, and we can make a decision.
Okay.
And you're, you're on the committee, so you can, you can.
You can argue all day long.
Yeah. I mean, you'll help decide.
Yes, well.
I noticed that you've put in the salary line from the last. Was that not in the last?
It was not in the last one. Like I said, the legislation's coming out in October to encourage. Well, to actually mandate that you put salary range, but the, it's very, um. Specific in that it's where you expect to hire is what they're requiring. It's not necessarily, uh. Demonstrative of the whole entire range you might have for the position, but where you expect to hire is what you're supposed to put in there. That's the language that they have in the statute.
And they, the statute says you have to put that in the job.
Advertisement.
Advertisement?
Yeah, the job posting, when you post the job, yeah, and it's, it's supposed to equalize, you know, fairness in hiring. So that someone knows the range of the job that they're going for, even if they're underpaid in their current position. For other various reasons, you know.
Are you advocating that?
No, I was just curious, um, you know, I, I guess I was curious to know why it was added here and if. Yeah, what, what the advantage is, I mean, I understand if it's a legal requirement or whatever, but apart from that, you know, is there a? I don't know, I guess it feels disadvantageous necessarily to sort of post a range of salary, because. Yeah, it just changes your negotiation, you know, with candidates.
Since it's not required until October, we had this chat too, but I would, I would actually advocate if we don't have to, to remove it, but, um.
And is it generally assumed that anybody who applies to this position in their job description understands the after-hours requirements here? It's not just forty hours, you're.
Yeah, I'm sure that, I, I would like to think that anyone taking this position would, would expect that. They are the general manager of a utility, but I hear you, you know.
Usually it's in the.
Yeah.
Saying you expected off-hour bonuses.
Yeah. Yeah, if, if it's not.
And like you just got appointed as the Commissioner now on the other one.
I know, mine didn't have that, so not responsible after hours.
Wasn't the contract?
We are.
So, okay, so.
I, I, I would advocate for striking the sentence, and I thought I heard Rich say it too.
I, I would too, um, but I don't, yeah, I mean, I don't know all the consequences of.
I think a lot of job posts do have that now.
Yeah, I think everybody is transitioning.
Mass law did it because I think discrimination cases, people saying like. I should have been in this range, I was never hired in that range, you hired this guy at this range, and why didn't I get in that range?
I mean.
So Matt, I think that's like Massachusetts.
salaries are public information, the people who are applying to these jobs are going to know.
Well, exactly, so that's what targeted for why.
I don't, I don't see any.
I mean, if you, if, if the group certainly expects to hire lower than this range, then that's another thing, that's another.
I just, I worry that it pegs us, that nobody's going to want less than the top number, which is what we've, we've never paid that much.
It's all based on experience and qualifications.
Uh, I mean, this is the public meeting, so anybody that's, if you do any research is going to know it now.
If you just blow it down to one sixty.
It really is, I, I think they all know anyway, literally, I do believe they all know anyway. But, um, I think it's, it's, if whether or not you interpreted that it expresses a willingness of us to pay that. That's a different, that's a different topic, but I think people know the salaries that are out there, I like, I don't think that's, you know, hidden.
Yeah, I'm rereading it, there are two minor changes I would propose, um, and one is an addition. Where we're saying that they should have all these, um, qualifications. Adding after strategic planning, including for.
Sorry, are you looking at the job advertisement or the job description?
Um, I guess I'm looking at the job advertise. Eight one forty-three. So, uh, contract, you go, you, so the, the, the second paragraph from the bottom. Adding like, and strategic planning, including, uh, strong, you know, peak power management and efficiency, uh. Uh, topics or something like that, because it just says, oh, manage the utility, but we really need to keep managing like peak load and. Have that be something we really want somebody to understand with that.
Must be able to talk to Megan about peak power load.
I would say we just want to keep that that's clear in the job functions. Um, it might be a little bit too much for, for the advertisement, but I.
Yeah. It's pretty long ads already.
All right, so.
I mean, so. So nobody wants to add, you know, I mean, it is the single biggest thing that somebody can do to save us a couple of million a year. You know, is get, really take it to the next level.
We are live at any time, any proposed change is.
Does anybody, if, if, if people don't like.
I'm okay with the phrase as included peak, including peak management.
Including, including strong peak management, you know, uh, aggressive peak management, just to make sure that we're really thinking about this, right?
I would put stronger aggressive, those are.
Okay.
I might go peak power management, I don't, because peak is an adjective, not a. Yeah, okay.
Okay, fine.
Including peak management.
Yeah, if your guys are okay with that.
It's on the, it's on the screen.
Or peak load management, like.
Load management?
Load, load might be better.
Strategic planning, peak load management.
Um, to save words, I would trim the last sentence of the second paragraph, because. Uh, as I read it, it's like, yeah, it's true, but are, are they really interacting with? Utility related organizations at the federal level, what does that even mean? What's a utility, what's a federal utility related organization? What's a local utility related or, you know, it's like, yeah, and that, and that, it is subject to one sixty-four, but it's also.
EPA, FERC.
Last sentence in the second paragraph.
And then, yes, it's subject to the one sixty-four, but it's not the only thing it's subject to, so. I, it, it seems to go without saying. You know?
So I guess you have utility related organizations would be APPA, NEPA.
Me. But NEPA is not federal.
Me.
Those aren't federal government.
No, 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 but, but that's a state, that's a state, state and local, right, I mean, so, so all, that's why I said. APPA is.
Your transition assets.
Yeah.
I mean, NEPA and APPA both schedule like sessions going out to Washington DC and lobbying with your representatives, so that would be a federal level. Yeah, you need to. So, I mean, yeah, actually.
I would, I would also, I would agree to keep it, and I would also keep the master a lot, we, we want somebody who. Maybe that's not the only thing it's subject to, but they need to understand that.
But it goes back to this thing of like, this is the only thing that ever matters is that one.
It doesn't say it is exclusively subject.
Well, then why didn't it add, just add comma and other relevant statutes, you know, or other relevant laws? Because it, it's just, it's that other discussion that we need to go back to. Or is it just adding or including chapter? The position is subject to a message. To laws and, to laws, including that, how about that? Including chapter. Yes, laws and.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so before chapter one sixty-four, including.
You want to be in the contracting.
Well, because I mean, like, you got to follow past the general procurement laws. Right, and then you also got to do chapter one sixty-four, which is how you run a white plant. Right, exactly. Um, and may, I'd say. I don't know what elected officials, the GM is, what, what elected officials have you interacted with in the past weeks, Mike?
Elected, uh, Tommy Asia, Assistant Tommy Asia.
You and me, you've interacted with us, that, that you have.
The board.
Yeah. I'm just saying, I don't know how often the GM is actually down there at Beacon Hill interacting. You told me to shut up?
Yeah.
Just go ahead and say it. No, we're good.
That's fine.
Okay, any other? Comments, changes on the appetite? Okay, um, and on the posting.
Um, there was one sentence added by you, Pam. On the job description.
Sorry, yes, the job.
Let's go back to that really quick, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, we are approving this change ad with all of these. Marks, um, including the ones we just did. Sorry, including the ones we just did. You can. Which is including one sixty-four and then including peak power management. We're keeping the salary range as.
Yeah, it, it, it's quite a promising, Bob, I would shut up, um, you know, we don't mention the possibility of bonuses, and I know. We do, we have paid bonuses in the past, and we've done them every year, I think. And I think it's, it will be part of the compensation, so do we want to, when we're saying salaries, do we want to make a range? And then it could include bonuses for meeting exceptional goals or something.
That's too much detail for this, this is Sally's expected range, how, how that's formatted. It, it could be two twenty-five and then the difference in bonuses. With probably an upper limit expectation that if they do a really good job, they might get to the two seventy-five, number two seventy-four, nine ninety-five.
Kind of what I'm thinking.
But to me, that's, that's, I think you'd put that into the contracts discussion, so.
That makes sense.
Yeah, this is just a gross range of where your, your compensation would fall, it's not.
Then you want to change.
Salary range, not total compensation.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we could say count compensation.
Compensation is a better term.
There we go.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so expected compensation for this person's position, instead of hiring salary, I think the expected compensation.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, the only thing is, if you include benefits and things like that, it's well over two seventy-five.
The compensation.
All of that stuff is comprehensive benefit, so.
Well, comprehensive benefit to me is this, your pension, healthcare.
And all of that, and it, right, is going to be well over two seventy-five, that's my point.
So.
Is if we say the expected compensation range, that's, that's not.
Yeah.
A reason.
Well, what is the way, what's the way to, to do this that gets that?
The comp, it's the expected base salary range.
Well, offers.
Says, yeah, it says.
We had a bad year.
So then you're saying, if you use compensation as two fifty, you know, plus. RMLD offers comprehensive benefit package, well, that covers the.
It's based, two twenty-five and two seventy-five was intended to be the base salary range.
You're not saying total.
Yeah, it's the.
I'd keep the salary my, myself, because I think you're, you're going to have those discussions and you're going to be able to say. What you're willing to do and what you're not.
It can cover a lot of things.
Go back to salary. I, I, I would just go back to what it was.
Salary is negotiated.
I guess my, my, my point on this is that. Salary, you know, some people call it salary inflation, it, it. Salary pressure goes up and it goes up fast, and you can't claw it back, you can't get it back. And so anything to be conservative at the front end is helpful, otherwise. You know, as soon as you have, the top executive makes this much, then everybody else makes, you know, the, the, I don't know, the curb goes up. And it goes up really fast, and we want to compensate good people, and you know, this isn't about that, it's just about. Making sure that the pace of that upward pressure is manageable. That, that's, that's kind of my, I guess, my fear and my point in the.
So for the sake of the opening position, do you want to change it to two hundred to two fifty? And then there's your entrance, is that what you want to do?
Or two twenty-five to two fifty, because I know you're going to say there's people that make, already make more than two hundred.
Can I share just a little bit of data, just to say, um, so they were just, there were four, four. Out of the group of thirteen that was sort of in, in and around our range and size and possible likenesses. There were four under two fifty, um, above two twenty-five, there were five in the range of two fifty to two fifty-six. And there were four two sixty-six to two seventy-seven, so.
But, but one second there though, because we, we gotta, if we're going to start using comps, first of all, a lot of those people might, might have been there ten to twenty years. Some of those are, are doing multiple lines of business, including broadband, gas, and so they're.
Only, only one.
Okay.
And we took that out, we didn't count that one.
But I'm just saying, just putting those numbers out there, it's, it's kind of goes to Rich's point, we're like, we're all like racing to the top here.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not leaving out anything, I'm just telling you what's there, it's just, it's the data that anyone can.
Are, are those, um, people with some experience, is it entry level? This is for GM or?
I don't know who those people are, and so.
Just existing salaries.
Are similar, so it's forty.
We're not the largest, but we're running, we're running one business, not three, so that's.
We're leaving that one out.
That do get, that do broadband, and there's a whole bunch that do gas, so it's not only one, there's a lot, so I'm just saying.
There really isn't, just in terms of the data here, just there isn't any entries on those gas, water or telecom lines for. Any, maybe one or two have a water and a telecom, everything else is blank, just like.
I think this point, this is, you're supposed to put in what is, what do you think that you will land at in terms of expected salary range? I think based on the data that we just heard, that is a very reasonable expected salary range, does it have to be where we land if we're finding somebody who's? At a different.
Why don't we?
Experience level. We finish, we do not have to offer that exact number, but we're, we're trying to give our best guess of where we will land. From a salary perspective, and if we use market information, that is likely where we would land.
Why even give a range that's fifty thousand, why not just say their expected salary for the position is two fifty? Because that's dead center, and obviously it's, could be higher, could be a little bit lower. But the potential salary for this position is two fifty.
Typically, it's the range.
Uh, every posting I see now is a range.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Consideration of varying levels of experience.
I mean. Would shave a little conservatism there.
It would put a little bit of conservatism there, I, I've said my piece, and so.
How about two twenty-two sixty? There you go.
Alright, thank you.
I know it's shaving.
It's shaving pennies.
You're going to hire the person you want.
Yeah.
They, they won't come on the night.
I mean, you're also so long, bringing to candidates, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you got to look at it both ways, you know, it might, I mean, you got to make sure it's.
Competitive.
And that you bring out the best candidates.
What was the proposal on the table, two twenty to two sixty?
I heard a median of two fifty and plus or minus twenty-five puts us right in that range, so. Plus or minus ten percent, I, I, I'm, I'm happy with the numbers presented.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with them, leave it.
Okay, alright, we're leaving it. Okay, um. So job description, moving on.
Yep.
That was the job posting, um, you said there was a.
Just the one sentence at the end of the job summary paragraph, um, Pam, you had asked. For, um, something that would reiterate the mission.
Yeah.
And I just tweaked the sentence that was there a little, while ensuring the organization is focused on delivering reliable, low-cost, increasingly non-carbon energy to its electric customers.
The, the other piece that I, um. Uh, would like to add is around the experience, so we, in the job advertisement, we reference having senior leadership experience. But we don't do that in the experience section of the job description. You say like ten years of any facet, but we should probably say like increasingly, um. Increasing senior, increasing leadership experience or. I'll go back and.
That's a progressive.
Thank you, that's exactly progressive leadership experience.
Qualities, where do you want that to go?
Underneath the experience bucket, where we have ten years of all of these different things, we need to specify that there should be. Progressive leadership experience.
How about the last, the fourth, one ten years of experience in progressive leadership and project management?
Sure.
Al- also, the special requirement set the last, it's valid, it should say valid driver's license. Not necessarily a mass.
Yeah.
So, as long as you have valid driver's license, you're okay.
It doesn't have to be Massachusetts.
It should say valid driver's license, and it doesn't have to be in mass, it could be.
No, well, no, that's valid, that's the reason we reworded it like it is, so that it doesn't have to be mass, because just that it's. As long, whatever license you have, as long as it's valid for you to drive in mass, that's what that says.
Valid in Massachusetts, not a valid mass license.
Yeah, it doesn't say valid Massachusetts license, it just says valid in mass, so whatever you have has to be, let you drive here.
That's the craziest wording, that's like a lawyer.
It was a lawyer.
Valid driver's license, that's that, 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 I, I would, oh, that's confused.
That, that, that could be an international license also.
There's no such thing as a national license, you get one issue per the state, right?
You get international driving licenses also.
You don't actually get one, I've driven in Europe and you don't really get a license, you.
If you're from a different country.
You can get an international driver's from it, but, alright.
Um, but I don't know who made the point about, uh, additional hours, you know, representing RMLD. Uh, you know, in, in conferences, um. Off-hour meeting, off-site meetings, I think that, that if you are going to.
That's general management.
The, the, the general manager represents RMLD, um, at, at. At, um, off-site, off-hour meetings, however you wanted to say that.
At, um, off site, off hour meetings, however you wanted to say that. I think that, that would be something good, and, and that is an essential job function. Exhaling RMLD mission. To local governments, um, third parties, however you wanna say it, but, you know. Expectation is to represent RMLD in off hour. Off hour times.
Do you want this as a separate number, or do you wanna somehow incorporate it into number four? With that, um, interfacing situation.
I think your point is around, like, there's, there's evenings and other, you know.
Maybe that's it, expected evening, um, expected evening work. Is, it, it's, you know, off hour, um, time commitments are expected from the general manager.
You could go in six also, feels like a little clause.
Yeah, I would, I, I would make it a separate number and just to specify, it's like a, it's a schedule thing. In addition to it.
I think you just shouldn't get general off hours, cause it's not just gonna be meetings.
Yeah, off, 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 you know, general manager.
Yeah.
Our responsibilities are required by the general manager.
General hours including.
I would just say responsibilities.
Alright, so, um, I think we're. Good, any other comments on the job description?
Nope, I think that's fine. And the plan was to put the advertisement out Monday.
Yes. Why don't we just do this, we can send the subcommittee, um, for the search, the final posting. Over email.
So I think. You guys either committee or you as a board need to vote to approve this posting and direct HR to post it, I think you have to make that.
Oh, we don't have that in motion.
We didn't do that, okay.
We just, we just said we have to verbally agree, not we had to.
Well, we just. The job posting, so it's, it's done, we agreed to it and posted. The way you need to vote.
Oh, I said VOC votes to approve the JD, but I didn't give you the suggestion. Vote your for the advertisement and direct the director of HR to post advertisement to be agreed upon channels. Cause we also have channels here.
Motionist stated side Erica.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, yeah, thank you.
For both the ad and job description and to direct Susan to post it.
Yes.
And we'll put it on website and HR Jazz puts it out to some job boards, including LinkedIn, et cetera, and we'll through NEPA and APPA.
Great, perfect, okay. Thank you all for.
Is there anyone else that is, just to make sure I got it right, we have the full committees that we need, we didn't need anyone else appointed to those committees.
You can do it, I think you guys decided to not appoint anyone else, however, if you are in the committee and the committee decides they wanna add a couple people, that's totally fine as well. And then just to be clear as well, resumes, application packets, all that are just going to the committee, not anyone else.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm gonna be part of the, just as a.
Non-voting member, but.
Non-voting member to the, um. Committee that reviews the candidates, but not to the, or do you want me at the contract meetings too, it doesn't matter to me, but just.
Why don't you guys decide who else you might need, the contract subcommittee can decide if they want anybody else.
So you envision being at all of these committee meetings?
No, I'm just envisioning doing whatever you want me to do. Is that the right answer?
Careful what you.
Search committee is, uh, Susan will reach out to you guys to schedule the meetings, um, and she'll do basically what Erin and I do, your posting, drafting that stuff. So she'll basically be doing that admin work for that committee, um, the contract committee could go whatever way you guys think.
Okay, scheduling, um. Okay, so August twenty seventh will be our next. Regular session, do we want to do an executive session? You said you need by the twelfth, so that would put us at August sixth. If we're gonna do Wednesday.
No, just, I, I could do the seventh, but I couldn't, I could do the fifth to the seventh, I can do the sixth of August.
Oh yeah, I'm at that all week, my son's getting married tonight.
Is it possible to like a team one, try and take like fifteen, twenty minutes?
I'm gonna be in Vermont all week.
Can we have, will we have a quorum on the fifth, if we did the fifth? Is anybody else up for the fifth? This is the exact concession for, um, update on union negotiations.
We don't need to count without them.
No, good. I can, I can do the fifth.
I can do the fifth.
Just a second checking. Uh, yeah, I can do the fifth.
Do the fifth for a virtual executive session.
Two days with, uh, time six, five.
That's virtual, right?
Virtual, yeah.
That, oh, sorry, is that where facing?
Yeah. Why, I, I haven't booked a thing for the next three months.
Um, if we just get, uh, meeting invite out for all of these. And die by the calendar. Okay, uh, any other questions or concerns on any of the upcoming meetings?
It's the, the Thursday. November fourteenth, I don't think it's correct, right, and I, I can't do, I could do a Thursday.
Probably November thirteenth.
And I, I couldn't do a Thursday.
So that, was there a reason we couldn't do a Wednesday, was that? Like a conflict with a town meeting or something? November fourteenth, I think that's a, November fourteenth. Yeah, so it'd be thirteenth, but we're, it's not the twelve.
We can plan for the, oh, well, there was a Killam School building committee meeting, maybe that was why.
Unless Ray wants to go to that.
Hey, threw me out.
Alright, then, then bye. We're, we're all in.
It's up to you guys now.
Ray, we, we might go at a meeting.
Alright.
Okay, so Wednesday, November twelfth, and that's just a potential, a potential additional budget meeting if we don't get through it.
Is it the thirteenth or the twelve?
The twelve.
This is what this is for.
I, I, I think it's just, you just plan for it like. Last time we did the budget in two things, so this time also just plan for it, so it's not potential, it's just.
On the calendar and canceled if not needed.
Is the nineteenth happening? November nineteenth, if we're doing the twelfth.
So nineteenth is the definite date, twelfth is the potential date in case we need to, dates to get the budget done.
Oh, alright, okay.
You could block that though, twelfth could be the actual meeting and the nineteenth could be the extra additional since.
Alright, so I gotta save the time either way.
Either way.
Uh, do we need to? Do any warrant schedule stuff?
Warrant this August, it's gonna be Dave doing AP and, uh, which doing.
Yeah, just think, can we just, maybe for next time.
I have the actual.
Okay, alright. Excellent, okay, um.
Moved at the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board adjourned regular session. Moved that the Board of Commissioners adjourned regular session. Reporter, any roll call required, reporter, I.
Rich, Swanson, I.
Okay, thanks everybody.
Thank you.